Good morning. Recognizing a quorum of commissioners, I call the November 7th, 2025 meeting of the cannabis controlled permission to order. This meeting is being held hybrid pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 is being recorded. Commissioners Stevens, Roy and myself are participating in today's meeting. All votes taken today will be by rule calling. We have a full agenda today that I will generally summarize. We will start with opening comments from three commissioners before we proceed to staff license recommendations. There are three change of ownership recommendations, forty-six license renewal recommendations, six provisional license recommendations, and three final license recommendations, two responsible vendor training renewal licenses, and two requests for equitable relief and fiscal impact analysis. There are two items in the commission discussion and votes section today. A letter of support for the Massachusetts Committee on Gaming and Health grant application to the Department of Mental Health for the Behavioral Health Promotion and Prevention Grant Program. I expect we will take a lunch break at 12:30, but any colleagues needing to take a break, just let me know. I will ask that commissioners wishing to comment or ask questions during any part of the meeting, raise their hand to recognize. With those initial comments, I will turn things over to commissioners for any comments and bar updates. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I want to thank those folks who attended our listening session yesterday on areas of disproportionate impact. Certainly appreciate their testimony as well as I know folks have been submitting written testimony as well. Also, ahead of next week's Veterans Day, obviously not only do we need to say, take the opportunity to thank those who served our country, including I know some members of our own team, but we should again use this day to highlight the opportunities available to our veterans across Massachusetts in this new industry. Veterans are highly sought after employees by our licensees through their diversity plans. Veteran-owned businesses offering services such as electrical, plumbing, marketing, or any number of services needed by the licensees are highly sought after. Obviously, fighting for access to medical cannabis for our veterans has been an effort of this commission with Commissioner Roy's leadership. And veterans interested in entering the industry as a licensed ME receive additional support throughout the licensing process. So as we celebrate our veterans, we also hope, I hope we can also send a message to explore the opportunities available within this industry for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Roy.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'll be super brief. I just want to thank Ryan Dominguez and all the folks from Mass Cannabis Coalition for inviting myself and Chair O'Brien to give some comments, brief comments this morning. It was great to see and talk to many licensees. So thank you for that opportunity. Always enjoy going out in the community, engaging with stakeholders. Also, I also want to thank the folks who testified yesterday regarding the disproportionate impact areas. Your voice is crucial and your input is critical. So thank you to all who testified. And I want to echo Commissioner Stevens and on of our veterans, I want to recognize and thank them and how grateful we are for their service. And, you know, we will continue to advocate for our veterans, whether it is increased opportunity to medical cannabis or jobs within the industry. So I want to thank them and we will continue to advocate on their behalf. So thank you for my time this morning.
Great, thank you. And just getting right to work, we will be taking up the staff recommendations on change of ownership. We will have Christine Moriarty will be joining us here, or someone from licensing.
Chair, I'm here. I'm virtual today. I'm feeling under the weather.
Okay. Thank you. All right, Christine, do you want to, I think our first up is Beacon Compassion? Just again, these are all individual, yes, Christine? These are individual votes, yes?
Changes of ownership are correct.
Yes, okay.
Can we have the next slide? The licensee here is Beacon Compassion, Inc., and they are seeking a change of ownership and control of one adult-use license and are requesting to add one individual and three entities. Commission staff has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are presenting it for the commission's review and vote.
Thank you. Do the commissioners have any questions or comments about the change of ownership for Beacon Compassion Incorporated?
I just have a comment at the end regarding changes of ownership in general.
Okay, after the vote. Question or comment on this, I will entertain a motion, Commissioner Roy, to approve the change of ownership for Beacon Compassion. So, Commissioner Stevens, right here, second?
Second.
Having been moved in second, I'll take a call the roll. Chair votes aye. Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Next, we move to Haze of Grafton.
The licensee here is Haze of Grafton LLC, and they are seeking a change of ownership and control of two adult-use licenses and are requesting to add one individual. Commission staff has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are presenting it for the commission's review and vote.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions or comments on this change of ownership recommendation? Hearing none, Commissioner Stevens, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change of ownership for Haze of Grafton.
So moved.
Right here, second, Commissioner Roy?
Second.
Having been moved in second, it'll take a call the roll. Chair votes aye. Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Western Front.
The licensee here is Western Front LLC, and they are seeking a change of ownership and control of one adult-use license and are requesting to add one individual and one entity. Commission staff has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are presenting it for the commission's review and vote.
If there are no questions or comments from the commissioners, I will entertain a motion, Commissioner Stevens, to approve the change of ownership for Western Front.
So moved.
Commissioner Roy?
Second.
Having been moved in second, it'll call the roll. Chair votes aye. Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Commissioner Roy, you had a comment on this in general?
I did. You know, I've had the opportunity in the last few weeks to speak at a number of pretty well-attended conferences in Boston, a lot of it regarding banking, access to capital. And the issue of change of ownership was brought to my attention that, as we all know with federal prohibition, there's no bankruptcy protections. And we have some distressed entities in Massachusetts, and some of them wind up in receivership. And when there's a change of ownership going on, it was explained to me that, you know, it used to take many, many months. We've got it probably down to four to six months. But when you have a distressed transaction, you have a distressed entity, time is money, and there are people, bud tenders involved. And so it was brought to my attention that, you know, maybe for these receiverships, that they get prioritization in the queue for change of ownership because, you know, deals can fall through, people can be out of jobs, and it seems to be more of a sense of urgency around this. So I just want to, you know, share that feedback I receive with my colleagues. Maybe it's something we can talk to licensing about when we're aware of a receivership and there's a change of ownership, maybe we can expedite that process.
Are we seeing this, and maybe the executive director can weigh in on this, are we seeing that there are, I mean, obviously, we understand time is of essence for everyone, and every month delay is more rent and other things. But are we seeing that it's a problem? I mean, obviously, we have more and more licensees going out of business right now. And so it may become...
You're seeing more and more receiverships happen.
Right.
And there's, you know, there's no bankruptcy à la protections for these folks. So these receiverships are really the only vehicle, if you will. And so, you know, we're trying to keep, in some cases, change of ownership will salvage the business and the jobs that go along with the business. And so I'm wondering if these can be flagged and maybe expedited to help keep them open as opposed to, you know, going under and people losing their jobs.
I wonder if the executive director might, you know, weigh in on something like this in terms of staffing and what might that impact be? I mean, it sounds like it might not be problematic, but just like your feedback on that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would suggest I'll work with Commissioner Roy, look at a bit of a trend analysis and then report back to the board if that sounds acceptable.
That sounds good. Thank you. Okay, Christine, moving on, staff recommendations on renewal licenses. I have not been made privy to any conditions. Commissioner Stevens? Can you point that out? Because I don't have that here.
Yeah, let me look. It's HVV Massachusetts.
HVV, okay, that's number 25.
Yep, just that one.
Okay, why don't we pull that note first? Okay, so Commissioner Stevens, would you like to describe your conditions?
Sure, Madam Chair, thank you. This is a proposed condition for renewal of HVV Massachusetts, MCR 140970. The proposed condition is within thirty business days of approval of application for renewal. Contact CCC Licensing Division to provide a response on progress towards goal number one under their diversity plan in accordance with 935 CMR 500.1011C 8K and 935 500.1034B. It looks reading through the application that they might have just made an error and brought a goal from their positive impact plan and dropped it into progress on their first diversity goal plan. So if they want to take the opportunity to update that, it'd be helpful.
All right, so we will take out HVV Massachusetts with the condition as proposed by Commissioner Stevens on the renewal of HVV Massachusetts. Commissioner Roy, do you have any questions or comments?
Well, after the vote, I do, above.
All right, would you move to approve?
So moved.
Okay, Commissioner Stevens, would you second that motion?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, I'll take a call the roll. Chair votes aye. Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
The renewal of HVV Massachusetts is passed with the condition enunciated by Commissioner Stevens. Do you want to wait till the end of this, or do you want to make a comment?
Just about diversity plans really briefly, Chair, if you're okay with that. Yeah, and so with diversity plans, we had some questions yesterday about Indigenous people in diversity. And I know you were advocating for that, Chair, previously. So diversity plans are to promote equity among people of color, particularly Black, African-American, Hispanic, Latinx, Indigenous people, women, veterans, persons with disabilities, and LGBTQ plus people in the operation of the marijuana establishment. The plan shall outline the goals, programs, and measurements. The marijuana establishment will pursue once licensed. So I just want to kind of just a little gentle, friendly reminder of that.
Thank you. Now, Christine, just taking up the rest of these renewal licenses as a group?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't think you need to make any comment. Oh, thank you. Anyway, we will just, so now we are taking staff recommendations on renewal licenses, one through forty-six on our list, minus number 25, HVV Massachusetts. Commissioner Roy, I will entertain a motion to approve these renewal license renewals as a group. Commissioner Roy, will you make that motion?
So moved.
So, Commissioner Stevens, will you second that motion?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, I'll call the roll. Chair votes aye. Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. And now we are going to staff recommendations on provisional licenses.
Can we have the next slide, please? Thank you. The applicant here is Lovewell Provisions LLC. The proposed location is 56 Gardner Road, located in Hubbardston. They are seeking a marijuana retail license. This applicant received expedited review and is a social equity program applicant. Commission staff has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are presenting it for the commission's review and vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on this recommendation to approve the provisional license?
Sure, I have a condition on this one.
Conditions?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
I would recommend the following condition for Lovewell Provisions LLC, MRN 285445. Prior to final application for licensure, provide a response to CCC Licensing Division to review how licensee plans to offer discounts to EEA and SEP licensed adult-use dispensaries as a marijuana retailer in accordance with 935 CMR 500.0508A and 935 CMR 500.1011A 11.
Explain that?
Can you repeat it?
Sure. Sorry about that. Sorry, but in their proposed positive impact plan, they are suggesting that they want to make discounts available to EEA and SEP licensed adult-use dispensaries. However, they themselves are a retailer and they can't do E to B. So I'm asking them to just kind of go back and clarify.
Okay, okay.
We throw in the right language for citations.
Okay, all right. With the recommendation, recommended motion language included, Commissioner Stevens, I will entertain a motion to approve the provisional license of Lovewell Provisions. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, I will take call the roll. Chair votes aye. Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Last Green Valley Seeds Company.
The applicant here is Last Green Valley Seeds Company. The proposed location is 1 Cabot Street, located in Holyoke. They are seeking a marijuana micro-business license. This applicant received expedited review and is a social equity program applicant. Commission staff has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are presenting it for the commissioners' review and vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, conditions on Last Green Valley Seeds? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion, Commissioner Stevens, to approve provisional license of Last Green Valley Seeds.
So moved.
Commissioner Roy, right here, second?
Second.
Having been moved in seconded, I'll call the roll. Chair votes aye. Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. On to Paper Crane Provisions.
The applicant here is Paper Crane Provisions LLC. The proposed location is 56 Gardner Road, located in Hubbardston. They are seeking a marijuana cultivator license. This applicant received expedited review and is a social equity program applicant. Commission staff has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are presenting it for the commission's review and vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Commissioner Stevens?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Just a quick comment. It was interesting to note in both Paper Crane and Lovewell Provisions LLC that they both intend to use our Equity Works Career Hub to try to recruit employees. So happy to see that folks are identifying that as part of their plans.
That's good. You need to do a better job of promoting. So thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve this provisional license. Commissioner Stevens?
So moved.
Commissioner Roy?
Second.
Having been moved in seconded, I'll take a call the roll. Chair O'Brien votes yes. Chair, Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Royal Sun Cannabis.
The applicant here is Royal Sun Cannabis LLC, and the proposed location is 1 North Main Street, located in Templeton. They are seeking a marijuana retail license, and this applicant received expedited review and is a social equity program applicant. Commission staff has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are presenting it for the commissioners' commission's review and vote.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or conditions on Royal Sun Cannabis? Hearing none, Commissioner Roy, I'll entertain a motion to approve this provisional license.
So moved.
Having been, Commissioner Stevens, do I hear a second?
Second.
Having been moved in seconded, I will take a call the roll. Chair votes aye. Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
And Royal Sun Cannabis provisional license passes unanimously. Sweet 420 Wellness.
The applicant here is Sweet 420 Wellness LLC. The proposed location is 1295 to 1297 River Street, located in Boston. They are seeking a marijuana retail license. This applicant received expedited review and is a social equity program applicant. Commission staff has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are presenting it for the commission's review and vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or conditions that anyone would like to make? Hearing none, Commissioner Stevens, will you recommend that Sweet 420 Wellness have its provisional license approved?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Commissioner Roy?
Second.
Having been moved in seconded, I'll call the roll. Chair votes aye. Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Sun Fusions Incorporated.
The applicant here is Sun Fusions, Inc. The proposed location is 6 Molasses Hill Road, located in Brookfield. They are seeking a marijuana cultivator license. This applicant received general review. Commission staff has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are presenting it for the commission's review and vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or conditions that you have right now? Hearing none. Commissioner Roy, I'll entertain a motion to approve the provisional license of Sun Fusion, Inc. Commissioner Stevens, right here, second?
Second.
Having been moved in seconded, call the roll. Chair O'Brien votes yes. Commissioner Roy?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Now we're moving to final licenses, which are voted upon as a group. Any comments from staff, Christine, other than you're presenting this?
There are three final license recommendations for the commission's consideration, which include one retailer, one product manufacturer, and one medical marijuana treatment center.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments, or are there any other questions or comments about these final licenses? Hearing none, Commissioner Stevens, I will entertain a motion to approve the final licenses of Elevated Roots, Holyoke Wilds, and NSAJ Holdings. Do I hear a motion, Commissioner Stevens?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Commissioner Roy?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, I'll call the roll. Chair O'Brien votes yes. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. Now we move on to staff recommendations for responsible vendor training renewals.
The applicant here is 420 Trainers LLC. They are seeking to be renewed for an additional two-year certification to provide delivery core curriculum trainings in the Responsible Vendor Training Program. Since their original certification date, they have provided instruction for seventy-two marijuana establishment and medical marijuana treatment center agents. Commission staff has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are presenting it for the commission's review and vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on the recommended renewal of Responsible Vendor Trainer 420 Trainers? Anyone here? Nope. And wait a minute, this is just Jenny's. So anyway, I will entertain a motion to approve the recommended vendor training renewal of 420 Trainers. Commissioner Stevens, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Commissioner Roy?
Second.
Having been moved and seconded, I'll call the roll. Chair O'Brien votes yes. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Roy, it passes unanimously. Moving on to C1 Compliance Group.
The applicant here is C1 Compliance Group, and they are seeking to be renewed for an additional two-year certification to provide basic core curriculum training in the Responsible Vendor Training Program. Since their original certification date, they have provided instruction for sixteen marijuana establishment and medical marijuana treatment center agents. Commission staff has reviewed the application for compliance with applicable laws and regulations and are presenting it for the commission's review and vote.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments regarding C1 Compliance? Hearing and saying none. Commissioner Roy, do I hear a motion to approve this responsible vendor training renewal for C1 Compliance? Do I hear a second? Commissioner Stevens?
Second.
Having been moved in seconded, I'll take call the roll. Chair O'Brien votes yes. Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Roy?
Yes.
Okay, now we are moving on to requests for relief and fiscal impact analysis. And I think we have Attorney Gooden is coming up to talk about this. Oh, okay. We have the General Counsel and the CFAO as well.
You're a bit of a team, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And if I will, is there, they're coming up, if I may, Madam Chair?
Please, thank you.
So just want to reference, obviously, we've had this in front of the commission previously. It was prior to us having the chair here, so we are going to kind of start from the top. But one of the main questions that came up in looking at an equitable relief case, one of which will be discussed today again, was in, we provide the commissioners kind of the universe of what the financial impact may look like for the commissioners to choose to make a number of different decisions that are at your, at your options for you to consider. So with that, we again have the General Counsel on the topic of equitable relief, Enforcement Counsel on the individual cases, and the CFAO, who has worked with licensing and others to put together that financial impact analysis for you.
Thank you. And who will be leading us? Will the General Counsel be leading us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
Before you today are two equitable relief petitions, as the ED just mentioned, one of which is a continuation of petition that you had started to consider earlier. We'll take those up in turn. Before we get to consideration of the petitions, I just wanted to give a quick overview of the process that we go through to review these petitions for your benefit and for the benefit of the public. This is really a collaboration between the Enforcement Counsel and the General Counsel and their teams. So in situations where petitions are filed, they initially go to our licensing department. They're then forwarded to the General Counsel and legal department for review. That review is limited to determining whether the petition is, has properly presented and met the requirements under our regulations. So in that context, the legal department looks at whether the petition satisfies and is ripe for review under our regulations, which require a petition to, a petitioner to have been the subject of a discontinuance of relations between the town and the licensee. So once we complete that review and determine that, that those requirements have been met and that a notice of discontinuation of relations has been established, we then turn the matter over to Enforcement Counsel and his team for a due diligence review. And pursuant to that, they do a deeper dive into the particular facts of the situation. We'll review the documents that have been submitted by the petitioner and then come up with their own set of recommendations and a menu of options for the commissioners to consider as they then are presented with the matter to discuss and decide on. And so, and that is the process that we've established through an SOP in reviewing these towards petitions. In the case here involving Deerfield Naturals, which is the one that we'll take up first, which is a continuation of a matter that had been previously discussed, the board had requested a fiscal analysis. So the CFO, CFAO is here to provide that analysis for you here. I will remain here to answer questions on behalf of the legal department and answer any questions as to the regulations and the board's authority under them to order particular forms of relief. So with that, I was going to turn it over to executive, sorry.
Yeah, Commissioner Roy?
I just want to level set us before our CFAO goes. I believe I requested the fiscal impact. This particular licensee has three license types. They're requesting a refund of sorts. And I think it's, correct me if I'm wrong, is it totaling twenty-five thousand?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And, and the reason we, I asked for the fiscal impact is because this is not a one-off. This could be routine request in light of the situation we find ourselves in. A lot of folks asking for administrative extensions while they're trying to negotiate in good faith a host community agreement, and this seems like that they were unable to do so in this municipality. So I, I said, what if everybody who applied for this extension ended up in the same position and turned to the commission for refund? What quantify that and what that would look like? So I just wanted to level set us why I asked for that, and I'm very curious to hear what you have to say. So thank you.
Who wants to go first? Tim, did you want to respond to the process, or would you like to?
I can go. I wasn't sure whether, Tim, we had, was going to reiterate where we were with this. Go ahead, Jim. I mean, if the, if it would be helpful for the board in considering this, I can go through and just provide a brief kind of way of background for the...
That would be great.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, commissioners. And so just briefly, by way of background, to kind of catch us back up to speed on this request for equitable relief submitted by Deerfield Naturals, Inc. So this request was initially submitted on October 16th, 2024. It went through our process for review. I will note that this was the first one that met the initial burden to be considered for equitable relief. So Deerfield Naturals, they hold, they have three licenses, a marijuana retail license, a marijuana cultivator license, and a marijuana product manufacturer license. All three of those were provisional licenses. They had not commenced operations at the time. All of those licenses expired a couple of weeks after they submitted this request for equitable relief on October 29th, 2024. So kind of rewinding slightly, just in terms of some context behind their request for equitable relief. So the renewal applications for all three of those provisional licenses for Deerfield Naturals were submitted on August 21st, 2024, on the same day the town of Deerfield Select Board notified Deerfield Naturals via a letter that they no longer intended to continue as a host community for that licensee as part of their determination.
Attorney Gooden? Chair, I'm sorry. Did you get a letter of mutual abrogation or just a letter?
There was a letter, there was a letter from the town noting that they are no longer intending to serve as a host community for...
Isn't a mutual abrogation required?
No, so there is, so we're in accordance with 500.180, and actually, obviously, I should defer to the General Counsel on this because his office handles that initial question. So excuse me, let me defer over to
Please.
General Counsel.
So just picking up on where EC was stating, the, there is no requirement for a mutual abrogation letter. The reg states that if a host community discontinues relations with an ME or on submission of a mutual abrogation agreement. So in this circumstance, it was determined that, given the posture of this and the back and forth between the host community and the licensee, that the condition was satisfied.
It's an and, it's an or?
It's an or, correct.
Right. Go ahead, thank you.
So, thank you. The, in support of the town's determination, the... Uh, sir, thank you. The, uh, in support of the town's determination, uh, the, the town cited that the licensee had not commenced operations or received final licensure, uh, and the site plan approval and special permit were also expired at that time. Uh, the licensee indicated, uh, despite the notice, that it intended to continue working with the host community to see if there was a path forward. Uh, Deerfield Naturals also cited to us that, uh, their delays on obtaining, in obtaining final licensure, uh, were in part due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, accessing reliable banking services, et cetera. Uh, they also noted that there were certain representations by the town prior to receiving that notice of discontinuation on August twenty-first, uh, that they intended to continue to serve as a host community. Um, so Deerfield Naturals was seeking, um, three elements of equitable relief. Uh, first, an extension of its license expiration date with no fee. Uh, second, if unable to obtain a compliant HCA waiver of the change of location fee. Uh, or three, if unable to find a new suitable location, a refund of the license renewal fees paid to the commission, uh, on August twentieth, uh, the day before submitting their application. Uh, so we will note this was initially discussed by the commission or, uh, excuse me, prior to the commission's discussion, uh, first discussion, uh, and of this matter on May twenty-second of this year. Uh, we did, uh, have contact with the licensee, the requester here, Deerfield Naturals. And at that time, they did note to us that they were no longer seeking the first two options, uh, for equitable relief, namely, the, um, uh, uh, renewal or extension of their license without a prorated fee or the, uh, waiver of the change of location fee, which are both options that are outlined in our regulations. Instead, they were, uh, they indicated that they were no longer interested in continuing in the industry and pursuing these licenses. Uh, so they were only seeking the third option that they identified, uh, which is a refund of the annual license fees that were remitted by Deerfield Naturals to the commission on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Uh, and the, um, the, the recommendation, uh, from staff here is that if the commission elects to grant that relief, uh, commission staff recommend imposing a condition to require the surrender of all licenses prior to the issuance of any refund. So they still had, there are three expired provisional licenses in Mass CIP. So, uh, in essence, our recommendation would be an affirmative surrender of those licenses by the licensee here.
Okay, um, any question? Commissioner, Commissioner Roy?
Um, so this licensee had a property right with the provisional license?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Roy, can you kind of?
Did they exercise, um, were any rights exercised by this provisional licensee?
Uh, so the, uh, in respect to any private litigation, I am not aware of any of that. And otherwise, uh, the licensee did not seek any kind of administrative process before the commission, other than this request for equitable relief that I am aware of.
It's my understanding Massachusetts general law, chapter one thirty-eight, twenty-three, state that a licensing authority may order a refund if a licensee withdraws their application before issuance or if the licensee is surrendered without any rights exercised. However, after a license is issued or used, no refund is available.
Madam Chair?
Please.
Uh, I think in this instance, I defer to the general counsel in terms of any of those, um, per your hearing.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. If I may.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I think the statutory provision that you're reading from, Commissioner Roy, pertains to the ABCC and not to the commission. Um, we would certainly be welcome to, to take a look at that, but, um, that is not, uh, the statutory provision that applies to.
Uh, it just says, uh, section twenty-three nature of licenses and permits, a status is property rights refusal to issue or reissue, revocation, et cetera, refund or fee transfer, stat receivership or bankruptcy of licensee expiration pledging for loan. So I, I, I don't see it as just a, ABCC, but.
But where are you reading that from?
Uh, Massachusetts, uh, section twenty-three, the one hundred ninety-fourth general court, Massachusetts.
You could give me the, the site for that?
Sure.
Chapter and section?
Sure. So, so what does that then imply? We haven't, what, what do you think that implies, Commissioner Roy? That they, that this licensee needs to have, in essence, sued or? Because again, I understand even, I believe, in a provisional phase, that there is a property right once that provisional license, or is it a final? Is it a final license or provisional license where a property right, a protectable property right actually attaches, Attorney Gooden?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, I think in this instance, I would still have to defer to general counsel on that, since it kind of relates to a hearing context and.
If I may, Chair, can I ask to have the question repeated?
Well, I think that the point that she's raising is in terms of what this, I always, I think I understood that there is a property right once a provisional license is granted, um, that is protectable. Um, but it might be final. I, I may not be recollecting that. So I guess I'm asking you, at what point does a property right of a licensee in their license and when does that attach? So that the provisional stage or the final stage?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think I'd have to research that a little more deeply to provide a definitive response. Here we are, uh, asked to, the, the petition being offered is under our regulations for a inequitable relief remedy. Um, so those are the, the provisions that apply to this consideration. So we can, uh, you know.
Do you want to, do you want to take a recess? And you can actually look in because it.
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Your question and your deliberation?
It could.
Uh, yeah, I guess, Executive Director?
I'm sure, um, I, I think a recess would be great, uh, to answer any of the, these questions and research further. Um, but I, I wonder if you do want to hear kind of the financial overview.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah. So maybe, I mean, maybe the general counsel can start working on that. We can let our CFAO, uh, take the helm here and, and walk us through the financial impact.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just thought there might be some context.
Oh, no.
Before we jumped into, yeah, before we jumped into the numbers. So I will now go through the, the chart we have here. So again, per your request, Commissioner Roy, we went through and evaluated, uh, licensees that are under non-compliant HCAs and are in extension mode right now. So there's a hundred and eighty-two, uh, non-compliant HCA licensees.
One eighty-two.
One hundred and eighty-two. Uh, originally, when you had requested this, we had the six hundred day cap. So that's what you're seeing there. As those numbers increase, to your point, they may max out. We did increase that now. Just for some context of where they're falling in these number of days, that's what you're seeing here. Just, Madam Chair, ma'am?
But may I ask a question?
Oh, please. Yes, yeah, no.
So, so it's based on the original extension. We've since then provided an additional three hundred and sixty-five day extension, but that's not captured here. Is that what you're saying?
It is captured here, but nobody's gotten to that point. So we only have one that has gone over the six hundred.
Okay.
Just to your point, yes, those numbers are increasing. We now have more room.
Yep.
But this is where we stand as of back.
Got it. Okay.
Will be increasing. And to your point, at some point, they may max out.
Thank you.
And I thought they, um, do we want to put that up? Oh, yeah, it is on the screen. Okay.
Okay. So if you could walk us through this.
Okay, thank you. So I think that is what, I thought that's what we're looking at. Do you have something different there?
No, that's it.
Okay.
It looks, it looks different.
The green.
Same thing. That's.
Yeah. It does. The colors are a little different. Okay, so we have, like you said, one hundred and eighty-two licensees on extensions. The amount of HCA extension fees that we've collected since they got into extension mode is one point nine million dollars. The license renewal fees that were collected for this group is one point seven million dollars. So what they do is they reply for their license renewal. Those were all pending because they did not have an HCA. So then they have to start paying an extension and they request the number of days. That's where we get up to the one point nine million. Now, to compare this, these numbers here to Deerfield Naturals, their initial relief requests were one was for, um, an HCA extension to reinstate without paying the fee. And this is just showing, we have a hundred and eighty-two that have already been paying the fee. Now, they since changed that and they were just asking for the renewal fee to be refunded. And again, just to point out, we've already collected one point seven million in license renewal fees that are still in that pending mode because they have the non-compliant HCAs. Now, the difference between Deerfield Natural and these, the, the group on the sheet is that they never, Deerfield Natural never went into the extension phase. So they let their license expire instead of paying the extension fees. And that's the only difference between this group and Deerfield. And the only other thing to note is there, as GEC mentioned, the petition for equitable relief was dated prior to the expiration of their license.
Could you repeat that?
The, the petition for equitable relief was received prior to the license expiring. It was, you know, within, within, yeah, within days. So they never requested an extension. They let the license expire.
Commissioner Roy?
That was a question.
No, no, no. I mean.
Never ensure.
Just saying, this is, I know you've really dug into this issue and you spend a lot of time on this.
So. So the last time we, um, spoke about this publicly, um, I had inquired where the funds would come, come from. Um, do we have an SOP in place? I know we've issued, uh, refunds on like double payments by, um, registered agents, right? So very like de minimis amounts of money for double payments, which was, I think, noted in maybe the, the auditor's report, something about the double payments at that. But there, there wasn't on a wide scale, and I think it was mostly relegated to that. So my question is, at the time, last time, we did not have an SOP in place on how to address this matter, um, do we? Um, and can you walk us through, does it come out of our operating budget? Or how, where does the money, it doesn't come out of thin air. So where does the money come from and what does it impact, uh, because it impact the commission?
Please, thank you. Um, yes, thank you. Um, refunds are processed as a refund from the Marijuana Regulation Fund. We do those on occasion now. If someone pays, like you said, a duplicate payment, but most of the time that's an error. They'll pay maybe the wrong amount. So then they'll put in a request. We verify it with licensing. Maybe they were supposed to pay fifteen hundred and they paid two thousand. So there's an error in what they paid. Um, those we do refund. We have an SOP for that. We also have instances that are addressed in our SOP for a licensee who may be paid the full amount and is eligible for an SEP waiver. So they should have only paid half. So again, they're paying the incorrect amount. We have a mechanism, an SOP. We refund them. It comes back out of the, um, Marijuana Regulation Fund.
Can you, now, when you say comes out of marijuana, if I may mention.
Please, thank you.
Um. How does that work?
Please, thank you.
It's an accounting transaction. So just as we're doing accounting transaction in MARS, the state accounting system, to transfer those payments on a daily basis as we get them, they come into our account. We do an accounting transaction to transfer that. It, it's, like I said, it's an accounting, it's an accounting entry from our account over to the Marijuana Regulation Fund. It's the same thing. It's a refund transaction that we enter into the state accounting system and transfers that cash back.
Okay.
The systems are.
Well, so we're not paying the Marijuana Regulation Fund, and then they're paying us back. Where are we cut? Are we writing a check to the Marijuana Regulation? Or the Marijuana Reg, that's what I'm saying. So that's, like, where's, where's the first, who writes the first check?
Please, thank you.
Thank you.
It, there is no check. It's a trans.
All right.
Within the accounting system, okay. So it's just a transfer entry. The Marijuana Regulation Fund is also on the controller of MARS system. So it's recent accounting entry, transferring the cash from one account to another within the state accounting general ledger system.
So, uh, on the MRF, they will do an electronic transfer in CCC through the MARS system.
Correct. It's an automatic transaction.
Okay.
So, but this is a way of saying, in terms of our bottom line, given how we are.
Precarious.
Precariously funded right now. So this will not have a direct, any, any question. I'm, I'm going to ask that question again. I'm, I'm.
I think, if I may, Madam Chair.
Please, thank you.
Obviously, the CFAO can explain the mechanism much better than I can, but I, I do think this is important more for the public as well. And I think it's an excellent question because this was my concern as well. We do not keep the fees.
Right.
The fees come, we obviously determine them, they're being reconciled. CFAO has a role in that, licensing has a role in that, but they're going to the MRF.
Right.
So the concern originally was, well, we're not keeping the fees, but we may be refunding a fee and that can't come out of our budget. We're not in that financial position. So the answer that the CFAO is providing is basically, no, it's not going to have to come out of our budget. It will be tapped through the MRF. Um, i- if we, uh, essentially use the same process that we've been doing for double payment. So if there's a double payment that comes in, the payment doesn't stay in the MRF and then we refund out of our budget, it all comes through the MRF so that our budget is not negative.
We're constantly reconciling that fund back and forth, and it's not having an impact on our bottom line. It's funds out there, they're coming in, coming out, going to the state and, and, but that, okay, so that.
Yes, and that, that's on a daily basis. Yes. It's not like we wait till the end of the month and those transfers, those entries are entered on a daily basis, going both ways.
Commissioner Roy?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So we've issued refunds for errors, duplicate payments, overpayments. Have we ever issued an outright refund?
Yes, I see it there. To, to my knowledge, since I've been here, no, we have never done that.
Uh, Executive Director?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think that that obviously is, is why the fiscal impact analysis, the questions that were raised previously, and if the commissioners have questions that we need to come back on this, this is precedent setting, right?
Right.
And, um, you know, a, a number of options that, uh, enforcement counsel has provided in the write-ups for both of these cases. You know, there may be some questions that you'd like for us to pull more information on. This is to provide what the universe and the potential risk is, should the commissioners want to refund, that there may be other refund requests that come as well. So now you have that, that context. Um, but ultimately, to your point, this is a precedent setting change theoretically for what we've normally done out of the MRF.
So, uh, so if I could just ask, so right now, we're just looking, and, and this is obviously going back a long time where the commission was not providing information to communities about whether or not their host community agreements were compliant with state statute. And we know that there have been a number of instances where there have not been compliance with state statute. Frankly, we probably should have been complying back then, and we didn't. And, you know, that is.
Off session for another day.
That is, that's, that's, and, and this is also why it's important for the commission to be proactive when they have an opportunity to fix problems rather than waiting for problems to be coming out at the other end of the toothpaste tube. So what right now, I mean, what right now is the total amount at risk? Because we have, is the total amount, I won't say at risk, but this is pending collection, pending the lawsuits, pending any sort of conflicts that are going on between. Is that?
Yeah, I, I call that like the doomsday scenario. So is that the doomsday scenario of everybody said? Is it the one point seven, the one point nine, or a combination?
To your, to your point, thank you. Um, to your point, the doomsday would be if, and it, and again, it depends what you, you vote here.
Right.
If you're saying, in this case, they requested the license renewal fee to be refunded, that would be the one point seven. If all these communities lost their ability to get a host community agreement, turned in their licenses and requested their refund back, that's what you'd be looking at the request of one point seven. The extension fees, again, would be another scenario. And again, in this petition, their initial request was to not pay those extension fees. So again, if that was something that was voted on, that could potentially be an issue coming forth in the future, um, to request reimbursement for.
Fifty million is the total worst case doomsday scenario.
But, but, but this isn't, but, but it, and this is what I'm trying to delineate, is that when a licensee has literally come to the end of their rope and they're basically being told, we don't want you in town anymore. So they've paid us for something that they literally can't have. Um, that's not necessarily in this universe. I mean, it's, it's conflict right now. It's still determining what that's going to be and how they're going to negotiate with the community. But it's not, these are not necessarily licensees that are all walking away, is it? Or?
No, and I would, I would agree that this is just what's in the chain.
It's, it's not settled right, right now.
If you were, if you were trying to look at apples to apples, there are five additional licensees that are in the same predicament right now.
As Deerfield.
As Deerfield. They paid their license renewal fee, never went full with requesting extensions and let the license expire.
And, and do you have that broken out or is that?
Uh, it's, was five of them. I just got this information yesterday, confirmed with licensing. There's five additional licensees. But what they, the license fee they paid was forty-five thousand dollars for those five.
Five, so five of them, five, and, and again, I, I, so I'm still getting my head wrapped around things. So five additional are in this situation where they've paid their fee. The community has basically said, no, we're not going to re-up with you. And so they now don't have the ability to move forward, or they are not going to sue. They, they are going to. They, they're going to retreat. Is that what we're talking about here?
To clarify, they've let their licenses expire. I do not have the reason why they let them expire. I don't know if it was related to the HCA. They just requested a refund. I'm sorry, they requested to renew their license. They paid their license fee, then never paid any HCA extension fee, so the license expired.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Stevens, do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question. Just trying to get my arms around Deerfield Natural, paid their license renewal fee, no extensions requested. Literally the day after they paid it. Town of Deerfield says, you haven't put a shovel in the ground, you haven't done anything in this period of time. Discontinuing what they paid, that twenty-five, twenty-five thousand is in the 1.7 million dollar bucket.
Oh, yes, that's right. Thank you. Mr. Roy?
And Executive Director, and I've had this talk, what does that provisional mean or that renewal? In other words, they have to submit application of intent of their capital resources, their community outreach plans, their plans. We do background checks. So we have done, we have spent time and energy and done our due diligence. So we have, the commission has expended resources to get them to this phase. We reviewed all of these documents, background checks have been completed. So, that's our resources that we have expended to get them to this point. So that's not free to get them. Like, I know they paid money, but we also use time and treasure and everything else. So that's just a watch. We can't write that off. It's like, you know.
Here you go. Executive Director?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Commissioner Roy and I have had this conversation and the CFAO as well. I think it's kind of where we came out because we looked at this pretty in-depth based on the OIG's letter. And we worked with a third-party auditor that we engaged called Clifton Larson Allen.
This was the, the two million dollar ballpark fees that were never collected.
There was, it was a, it was a separation in the OIG's kind of letter that sort of had the prorated fees, which we've obviously addressed as well with the SAO and others. And that has been, you know, ongoing and I think we've, we've spoken to that. The question within the OIG's letter that was not in the SAO findings was about provisional fees and whether or not they should be collected. And so when CLA looked at it and they conferred with the OIG as well, it was really an issue within the REG that basically makes it so that there is a period of time here where we as an organization are expending our efforts on somebody in the provisional phase. But if they drop out within the period of time before proceeding with the provisional, that there is a, they would not end up having to pay the commission. So, one of the recommendations in discussing with CLA is that we look at that regulation to say something should be upfront theoretically before we expend time and tax dollars.
What do you mean upfront? I mean.
So right now, it's, you enter the provisional process and yet if you do not proceed, there is not really a collection. It's not a, it's not a receivable because of the trigger within the REG. So the recommendation was if you put an administrative fee upfront to start the provisional process, then you're capturing something. So that is on our list of potential REG changes to bring to the commissioners as we move forward. And again, I mean, the CFAO can get much more in-depth. That's a high-level summary of where we are on that particular discussion. But Commissioner Roy has flagged that and we've worked with the OIG and CLA on that. And so I don't, this isn't a perfect example of it. This is somebody who paid, was not able to move forward because of something that was out of their control. And the question is, do you want to now refund it? But I think that the point of we did expend effort in it is a valid one to discuss.
Mr. Roy?
The, was there five additional or five including Deerfield?
Five additional.
So there's six in that bucket, similar bucket.
Correct.
The five already apply for equitable relief?
To my knowledge, no. And again, I don't know why they didn't go forward. We just, all I know is they, they paid their renewal fee and then let it expire and didn't move forward.
Okay, and so is there a way to quantify that for us?
I think we need to know the answer to that question.
We do.
Because I do think that, I do think that there's a difference, right? And I understand us spending money, but, but they've expended money and they've expended time and they've, you know, attempted and checked all the boxes. And it feels like they now have a dead end. And I don't know, you know, it, it, I don't know what standard we could or should put into regulations. But it feels like if, or do we not care if they just give up? Commissioner Roy, and this is.
If I'm going to open a restaurant and I have expended all this money and got safe serve permits and food permits and in my restaurant, I can't open it. Do I get refunded on all those permits?
Yeah, but it's a, it's a, I think it's a, I think it's a different, I mean, you can't open it because the town said, we're not going to, we're.
Maybe, yeah, I'm at odds with the town, yeah.
See, I just see this as a different situation because we, we basically we in essence were not speaking up. And communities were doing what they did to negotiate contracts that may or may not have been valid under the law. And so now because we didn't take a proactive stance to step in, we now have created a cascading set of problems, which includes a community. Now, I don't know why this community won't work. I don't know why this community won't work with them. Do we know? Is it, is it because they haven't made, have they not made progress? Have they just lapsed? Have they, you know, I mean, that's, it feels like understanding. If someone just didn't get their act together, right, and they didn't do it, I think that's a different scenario. If they just let it lapse. But if they were attempting and they were blocked by the community because the community does not like what the host community agreement says and they think they're not getting enough money. It just, it just feels like you have a second player in this that I think creates a barrier to a licensee being able to pursue its interests. If it's just, yeah, I'm just, team fell apart, don't want to do it anymore. Well, then I kind of think it's on that.
Yeah, exactly.
But I'm not, but, but I feel like if they've done everything, they've abided, they've negotiated. They may have negotiated something that wasn't valid in statute, but they were doing it because they wanted to get into business. And now a community says, we don't want to play ball with you. That's what I'm saying is I think that there are qualitative differences in the background that should help us make better and more consistent decisions that might be equitable.
Madam Chair, I think I can help answer some of these. May I read this letter into the record?
Please.
The town of Deerfield. It's from the Office of the Select Board. It's dated August 21st, 2024 to Deerfield Naturals, Inc. Dear Mr. Balone, on July 10th, 2024, the Select Board received a request to amend or replace the host community agreement HCA between the town of Deerfield and Deerfield Naturals, Inc., executed on June 27th, 2019, and amended on January 29th, 2021. In the five years since the HCA was executed, Deerfield Naturals has not taken any action to commence operation and has not begun construction on the facility. Section nine of the HCA states that, quote, "In the event the company no longer does business in town or in any way loses or has its license revoked by the state, this agreement shall become null and void. After five years, the company is still not conducting business in town and has not obtained a final license from the Cannabis Control Commission. Additionally, the site plan approval and special permit decision granted by the Planning Board on October 20th, 2020, and recorded on November 18th, 2020, in Book 07651, Page 195, has not been acted upon as required by Condition 18 of the Decision of Section 4666F4 of the Town of Bylaws, and therefore has lapsed. As a condition of its HCA, the company is required to comply with all local laws applicable to the facility and obtain all necessary permits and approvals pursuant to Section 1. As the facility has not obtained a license from the CCC, is no longer permitted under the town's bylaws and has not commenced construction of the facility. Deerfield Naturals has not complied with the terms of the HCA. Therefore, the town is electing not to renegotiate the agreement. Further, the number of HCA's available in the town of Deerfield is limited. Therefore, in accordance with the town's social equity policy, this license will be made available to a future social equity applicant. Please consider this notice under 935-50183C5. The town of Deerfield no longer intends to continue as a host community for Deerfield Naturals and notify the CCC accordingly, signed Town of Deerfield Select Board by its Chair, Tim Hilchi. Let me answer it.
Yes, it does.
Say, Director, thank you.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. And again, I mean, I know the Enforcement Counsel here is going to speak to any questions on the specifics of the case. So, so that as well, but just to kind of summarize here, that the Deerfield case, you know, this is the total universe as was requested at the previous meeting. CFAO has also covered that similar cases within that universe looks like about five other companies, about forty-five thousand. So just to give you a sense here.
But we're not entertaining them today, obviously. But it would be nice to know whether or not there's a letter like that in those five other requests. Because I, I, I would say that the equity has to be, if you, and I, and I, I did not see that letter. I did not find that or I missed it, my fault. But I think that that kind of gets to the point. So, okay. Have, have you been able to determine from the legal team about the property rights and when those property rights attach?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. To the question, I can briefly offer that, as you're aware, federally cannabis is illegal, so there's no federal property right here. So this is all governed by state law. And the commission in ID4G has been given very broad latitude in setting the terms and conditions for licensure. So the powers are derived from ID4G, those that are given to the commission. Generally speaking, there, it is up to the commission to deal with this scenario. But in a provisional situation, property rights do not generally vest. So I'll leave it at that.
But so, so then when do they vest at finally, at what point? I know that, I believe the previous Executive Director talked about this, but at what point do they vest?
That is in the discretion of the commission and I don't know if the commission has directly addressed that scenario, but.
Could you do further research on that? I think that we're not fully plumbing this. I think that you're missing.
I was always told that a property right attaches on provisional, I gather. So, maybe that wasn't accurate. So maybe, I think, yeah, a little deep dive, a legal, a deep dive on that would be helpful to us.
I'd be the furrier. Yeah, if you do a deeper dive on that, because I'm, you're, what you're saying is conflicting with legal opinions that I think I've heard previously. So, I don't know who's doing the background on that, but that would be helpful to know. Okay. So, so is there any? That, that letter says a lot to me right now. Go ahead, Executive Director.
I would suggest if you're interested in furthering discussion on Deerfield, given the letter and that discussion, that Enforcement Counsel could talk about some of the options that were provided in this case after their review.
Okay, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just as we're looking at or continuing to look at Deerfield Naturals, there were the three options and just, again, there are, the first two options that Deerfield Naturals was initially seeking, which they have confirmed to the commission that they are no longer interested in seeking. But just as a, just as a matter of clarity or identifying those, the first option that was identified is that as Deerfield Naturals licenses expired on October 29th, 24, the commission may consider approving the reinstatement of those three licenses, the marijuana retailer, marijuana cultivator, and marijuana product manufacturer licenses, and extending that license expiration date without a prorated fee. Again, that is one of the options that is specifically delineated in our regulations for requests for equitable relief. The further.
Just to state, they're not seeking this, but this could be something that, that when a company got in some trouble or maybe there was a conflict with the community, that this would allow them to perhaps reflect, look at another location, maybe go to another community to finally comply. So that would be kind of what that would entail, yes?
And yes, Madam Chair. And I mean, ultimately, in terms of the board's authority and what the board might do in one of these situations, I would defer to the General Counsel as the legal department advises in that capacity. But as one of the options that is outlined specifically in 935 CMR 50183C6C, there are four Romanets that identify four different options, just as a matter of information. Those options are the extension of a license expiration date without incurring additional prorated fees. Romanet two, the waiver of a change of location fee. Romanet three, the institution of procedures for winding down a marijuana establishment's operations at the license.
Do you start that again, and the third is?
Yes, of course. So just at the third Romanet?
Yeah.
So that would be institution of procedures for winding down a marijuana establishment's operations at the license premises. So essentially just winding down the business at that location. And Romanet four is, is much more broad. It is simply other equitable relief as determined by the commission. So just going back to in this instance, here, the only difference really between what is, what was an option that was being provided or suggested here is the reinstatement of those licenses because they did expire. So again, just in terms of the timeline, this request for equitable relief was submitted roughly two to three weeks prior to the expiration. And so as those have expired, now the commission is considering it, it would require essentially a reinstatement. So that was the first piece. The staff's recommendation on that is if the commission elected to grant that equitable relief, we would recommend imposing a reasonable expiration date for those licenses, just so that the extension without a prorated fee does not continue in perpetuity. The, and that would be in association with, the commission may consider granting a waiver of the change of location fee. The staff recommendation there is if the commission elects to grant that relief, commission staff recommend imposing a condition to require the licensee to, one, confirm that it is in fact ceased negotiations with the town of Deerfield and to submit the required change of location application within a reasonable amount of time as determined by the commission. Again, that recommendation is really intended to create some boundaries or guardrails on that. So the, the authorization does not extend in perpetuity. And then the third option, which is now the only option that the licensee is seeking, is if the commission does not grant that equitable relief, the commission may consider granting a refund of the annual license fees remitted by Deerfield Naturals to the commission on August 20th. If the commission elects to grant this relief, commission staff recommend imposing a condition to require the surrender of all licenses prior to the issuance of any refund.
Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Chair. A quick question either for, for legal or enforcement counsel. With the letter that Commissioner Roy wrote into the record, I'm curious as to what your opinion may be, and maybe this is also a question for our friends in licensing or in INE, but the provisions by which they decided not to renegotiate an HCA are essentially saying, we're, we're done. The provisions, not started construction, not a number of other things. If those were in any other HCA, would we consider that HCA non-compliant? Under our new rules, under Chapter 1.
I'm not sure if I'm following.
Yeah, it's, it's, Chapter 180, as I always viewed, it was a way to move folks past getting, having to pay extra fees, having, you know, changing up how the community impact fee was done. But obviously now we renew, we look at HCA's for compliance with the changes in Chapter 180. I guess my question is, the provisions by which Deerfield said, no, we don't want to continue with you as a, we don't want to be your host community anymore, are those provisions that we would find not in compliance in an HCA that we review?
So who are you asking, the General Counsel?
Either, either one of you, but. And I also know licensing does a lot of the review of whether an HCA is compliant or not, but I'll throw the question out there.
Sure, and if I may, I think the question, I ultimately defer to licensing on the question as they do do the review of HCA's. But to your question, this is not one of the issues. But to your question, this is not one of the issues that has been flagged either in statute or in our regs. That would prohibit. That would prohibit the town from taking the action that it did. This is not something that's been flagged as, you know, for example, a CIF that's 3% tied to the revenues of a business. That is, this is not one of those things that is specifically prohibited under statute or reg.
Commissioner Roy?
E.C. Gooden, so the proposed equitable relief would be in that fourth bucket, which is subject to other equitable relief as determined by.
Madam Chair?
Please, thank you.
Yes, that's correct, Commissioner Roy. And that's why that is identified on there. And then just the kind of final sentence of this memorandum as well, kind of further identifies that beyond these options, given 935 CMR 583 C6C, the Commission may also exercise discretion to consider other means of equitable relief. So even beyond these, but obviously, I would defer to General Counsel too in terms of the Board's authority to execute or implement specific equitable relief. But that, my understanding is that that section is very broad. But again, I would defer to General Counsel on the specifics.
Sure, right. So my understanding from the letter from the Town of Deerfield is that the licensee violated the terms of the HCA with failure to begin construction, a failure to execute on the site plan approval and special permit in accordance with the town's bylaws. And as a condition of its HCA, the company is required to comply with all laws applicable to the facility and obtain all necessary permits and approvals pursuant to such connection. So based on this letter, it seems like the licensee did not fulfill its requirements under the HCA.
Is that what you're saying?
So, Madam Chair, with respect to that, we did not look into verifying whether the town's allegations on that were substantiated through that. I will just note, though, that even beyond the issuance of this letter on August 21st, and this is included as, these are included as exhibits to the actual memorandum here as well. The town and the licensee did continue to engage in conversations even following this letter. So there were at least two select board meetings, one held on August 21st, so the same day that the letter was issued, where Deerfield Naturals was on the select board agenda. And then there was a meeting held on August 23rd, two days later, which the only identified or articulated kind of discussion item was the Deerfield Naturals HCA renegotiation. So even despite this letter, there were continued negotiations. My understanding is that the licensee continued to have, or run into issues, or the town and the licensee were not able to kind of resolve those differences. So that is why the licensee had since moved on from pursuing a license.
And what are they, what are they generally intending to do now?
I, my, I cannot answer that specifically with that. I think just from our perspective, what we've learned, they are no longer pursuing.
Doesn't that have a little bit of an impact on the kind of equitable relief that we could be considering? Because it sounds like it's a nonstarter for them to stay in Deerfield.
In terms of kind of what equitable relief the Board would offer, again, I'd have to defer to General Counsel on that one. But to the extent, I can look back at our notes from the call that we had with them back earlier in the spring, but I don't believe that there is, they specify what they were intending to do. I know that it is not in the canvas, may somewhere.
Commissioner Roy?
So to your earlier point, and to what General Counsel recently said, if there was violations of state law in our regulations, where they were charging in excess of 3% or a flat 3%, or upfront payments, or in-kind payments, or charitable donations, or things that weren't reasonably related, I would abundantly clearly side with this licensee, but I'm not seeing that here.
And, but, but, but we, do we know the?
The four corners of that HCA?
Do we know the four corners of their HCA?
Get that?
Yes, Madam Chair. So I do know that we have the HCA, that's submitted as part of the regular license renewal process. And then I am seeing from our licensing team as well that there was an HCA determination notice that was sent out, which identified certain noncompliant, compliant terms too. I will note too, just with the, as articulated in this memorandum too, the HCA was entered into prior to the. Exactly, thank you for finishing my sentence there.
But even if it was prior to the passage of 180, there are still, there were statutes in place about what you could or could not do in HCAs, right? I mean, do we want to see what their HCA is?
Yeah.
We might.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm kind of going in.
But I think it's us figuring out what, 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 what check the box do we want to deal with these kinds of recommendations? And I think that it is helpful, not helpful, but I think it is good policy to make sure that when you've had an entity that's gone through this process, that they have gone through it, and they've put together their paperwork, and they probably spent tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars getting to that point. And if we look at the HCA, and it is not consistent with what state statute has said prior to what 180 said, right? Or what it says now, that there might be some reason why a licensee didn't go for it, because there might have been some conditions that were onerous. So that might not be a bad, I just think that, you know, in talking with the staff about how we approach this for this or the other five or anybody else, that 1.7 million that might be coming to the forefront, you know, it's establishing, it's almost like, I hate to use the word culpability, because it's not, you know, it sounds like a bad word, but it's, it's, it's kind of the balance here of who has been trying to actually get their business over the goal line. Did they run out of money and say, okay, if you're trying to unfold, or, and that's not our problem? The Executive Director and then Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It sounds like we'll bring a little bit more information back, and obviously, we would want to make sure we're clear on that. One thing I would add too, just along the lines of what Commissioner Roy was saying in terms of the letter, and one of the things that I've been looking at with host community municipal equity out of Chapter 180 as well, is kind of the particulars of some of these towns as well, is that where host community municipal equity is asking, you know, a select board or city council or something like that to make commitments regarding equity, some of the pushback, which is valid, is that those bodies do not always dictate what a planning board would do from a special permit, which is referenced within that letter. And so a special permit may have terms and timelines for somebody to, you know, put a shovel in the ground, and that is not controlled necessarily by the licensing authority. And so I think from that line of questioning as well, what I would also, I'll go back and look at as well as the HCA as it relates to what was referenced for the special permit. And then to Commissioner Stevens' question of whether or not referencing special permit as an ability to withdraw, the HCA is currently accepted under Chapter 180. So I think I'll put that together as well, and just want to make sure that we're all clear on what we're bringing back to the Board.
So I don't know how you want to proceed, but I feel like we need a little bit more information. And I hate to delay something, as I know these folks have been waiting for a long time to understand this. But I think that this, and I don't know, Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Stevens, I know you had your hand up, go ahead, please.
Yeah, no, thank you, Chair. I, first of all, I struggle with the term equitable relief to a piece you just talked about, which is how much they have invested in. We will never be able to give them all of what they invested in back. So I, I find equitable is somewhat not a useful term in that.
Semi.
Equitable as we can make it. I think the other place that I would like to look at, look under 580 is for A8B, which is talking about prohibited practices in the HCA. And again, this is shift with 180, is I'm looking at prohibited practices. I'm not seeing anything that Deerfield did that would necessarily equate to those prohibited practices.
Have you seen, have you seen that we have their host community agreement here? When you say you don't see that they have prohibited practices?
No, 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 I'm looking at the prohibited practices in our regs and seeing how that aligns with whatever HCA there was. Because a lot of what we incorporated in prohibited practices was a result of Chapter 180. So I'm still, still trying to understand whether, I look at equitable relief, that term, whatever. I look at equitable relief as somebody is not, they can't strike a new deal based on the changes in Chapter 180. And what I'm seeing is stuff that had really nothing to do with the changes in Chapter 180. They didn't move ahead, they might have violated the existing HCA. And again, back to the question of whether we would have found that HCA compliant or not. So again, more questions that I need help with.
Commissioner Roy? So I think we're all in agreement, we need more information. I'd like to see the HCA, I'd like to read it in its entirety. Also, Lisa, if the next time this comes back before us, if we can have that financial impact of the additional five that are in that, the quantification of that, that would be helpful.
I can reach out to licensing, see if they have the information. They may not have any more information, and it expired, but I can definitely reach out just to see if they know why, that they paid the license renewal fee, but didn't go forward. It may have just expired. They do not have any further information, but I can definitely reach out and see.
But also, so those five that just expired, is there a time limit for them to petition the Commission for equitable relief?
Madam Chair?
Please, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Roy. Not that my understanding, again, though, just in terms of our process, how we receive equitable relief applications, or requests rather, the first step in identifying whether the licensee has met that threshold issue of receiving a notice of discontinuation or mutual aberration agreement, that's handled with General Counsel's office. So I would defer to General Counsel too in terms of kind of.
Appropriateness?
Exactly, appropriateness for that, but that's just my understanding based on the regulations.
So there's no time, so even though they have not submitted for equitable relief, they still can, based on that answer?
If that is why they decided to not move forward, we don't know if they're ready to extend waiting services.
We don't, exactly.
And so just to clarify, these are the choices that we have, but, but, but obviously, they're seeking to get that money back. Are they, are they seeking other waivers, change of location, or are they seeking that now? Because that kind of tells us whether or not they want to try and figure out a new landscape to go to. So these are our choices, but what are they seeking?
I had an idea, I don't know if I shared it publicly last time, but if they were seeking a change of ownership or location, I'm sorry, change of location to another municipality, I was going to propose equitable relief, that that money is like in an escrow with us, that they could apply in the future. That could be applied, not a refund, but it's kind of in an escrow with us that we could apply to them if they change locations and apply with the Commission again. That was just a thought of the bucket number four, where we have subjectivity to do what this Board, you know, has discretion to do. I just thought that.
Because I want to make sure that we're not setting precedent.
It is setting precedent, no, but it sets precedent, but it also is, I think, somewhat, you know,
mindful that you may have entrepreneurs that have invested a lot of money, they would like to try to make it work. So we don't, we know what they're planning on doing? I mean, because these other options, I think, assume, I think we're assuming they're not going to stay driven, right? We're assuming that, right?
And Madam Chair, so just looking back at our notes from when we were able to contact the licensee here. So the company identified to us that they're no longer pursuing relocation, instead just seeking the refund. Difficulties with the town, yes, exactly.
Okay, so, Executive Director?
Just wanted to add, because Commissioner Roy jogged my memory too. I think we had discussed the possibility, if they had wanted to just choose a different location, that, you know, the Commissioners could choose to not charge anything for like the change of location, those types of things. They've indicated that that's not their interest.
So they just, do we know, are they winding up, or they, do we know? Are they trying to wind up business, or turning?
Madam Chair, yeah, from my understanding, the license expired last October, and they have not made any follow-up to try to get relicensed or anything along those lines.
So I think we still might want to get, drill down into this a little bit deeper. I think that our sense, we may have some consensus, but I'd just like to make sure that under, I think it's understanding this, because then it also colors our thinking, because we will be establishing precedent and policy, and we want to make sure that we're doing this in a well-thought-out way that is fair to as many entities and persons as possible. So should we table, we probably should table this particular one, pending getting a little bit more information. Is there, I won't say a vote, is there?
Well, there could be a vote, we're asking.
Yeah, all right. So do we need to make a motion?
Or just ask a question?
I mean, are you doing anything? Motioning?
Yeah, I need the Board to direct staff to.
Friends, you like to formulate a motion?
Why?
We always formulate, so. No, but I'm just saying, would you, I mean, I don't think that the language is too difficult. Just what would you like to?
So if I may, please, to my fellow Commissioners, we're looking for the HCA. We're looking for the financial impact of the five existing licensees who have expired.
We might also want some of the relevant background information that I think we are talking about today regarding Deerfield that we may want to note. We might want to see the HCAs from those other licensees as well, or some of the, I, I think that we've kind of enunciated what the maybe tipping point can and should be going forward, which is, one, is this a business decision that someone made based on that they can't move forward? I mean, you know, if you read the letter from Deerfield, it sounds like they went, they threw up their hands and said, you're not moving forward, so we're done. But we do not know whether or not there were onerous provisions in those HCAs that might have impacted their decision to call uncle. So any additional information, I think that we've discussed here, if we can get that for those other five, that would, I think, help us set a little bit more.
When do we want it back by?
You tell me, you tell me.
I mean, a month.
Yeah, I think a month, because again, if there is, if we do find that there's something behind the information that we're asking for, you know, making sure that these people, if indeed that is still on the table, I'd like to make sure that we do it more quickly, not less quickly.
Okay.
Do you agree?
All right, you want me to go?
Please.
Please, okay, thank you, Madam Chair. The motion raises follows, within 30 days, the Commission directs staff to provide Commissioners with the HCA for Deerfield Naturals Inc., the financial impacts of the five referenced licensees that have expired, any additional relevant background information, and a legal analysis of the property right related to provisional licensure.
Yeah, and you said that the, but it might be a little bit more provisional, state that again?
A legal analysis of any property right related to provisional licensure.
And, well, yes, but, but I think we, I think we want to know, when does that property?
And when does?
When does it, and?
Commence.
Commence.
Okay.
Or attach, I think, is that the right word?
You're going to make me read this again?
No, no, but just, you just added that addendum, which is.
Okay.
And when, when in the process does a property right attach? Okay? Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
Have you been moved in second, and I'll take a call, the role, Chair O'Brien votes? Yes, Commissioner Roy?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, so we have that motion, so thank you.
We have a.
Yes, oh. Yes, okay, why don't we take, yeah, all right, I want to entertain a motion, if you'd like to draft that on the fly right now. So why don't you move it until 12:10? Okay, so moving that we take a brief recess until 12:10, do you have your seconds?
Second.
All is in favor, I oppose, the ice has happened, so we will be back at 12:10.
Okay. Okay, great. Convening the cannabis mission back to order. So we can move on to the next equitable relief request.
Chair?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So this second request for equitable relief before the Board for Consideration is submitted by the licensee Community Care Collective, Inc., which its DBA is Collective Premium Cannabis. This is a marijuana retailer. They are an operational licensee in the town of Borrica. Just for the record in this instance, because this is the first time the board is considering this one, the license number is MR 282974. So in this instance, the licensee submitted initially submitted their request for equitable relief on December 31 of last year. I will note that there was at that time. The submission was in a format that is not, they submitted the initial request in accordance with our application, but they also submitted a voluminous request, which is structured more in line with a court complaint, a court that would typically be, a complaint that would typically be filed in court. So there is a lot of information that is contained within that. So I'll briefly kind of go through background information here. So to update some information from the actual memorandum, because this was submitted or approved for consideration by the board a couple of months ago, the expiration date that is identified on, I believe this is page two. At the top, the memorandum states that Collective's license currently expires on April 30 of 2026, or excuse me, doesn't, April 30 of 2026. So that is still correct. That is in accordance with certain license extensions that were granted due to HCA, continuing HCA negotiations. So as I stated, the initial request was submitted on December 31, 2024. Within that request and the complaint that was filed along with it, Collective is arguing certain claims for mandamus, violations of the statute and implementing regulations, as well as certain declaratory relief. So those all kind of fall within that fourth bucket of options as we discussed previously. So just to identify kind of high level on this one as well, the specifics are further articulated in the actual memorandum, as well as the exhibits that were attached as well. But in essence, this request has been prompted by an ongoing dispute between the licensee and the municipality host community regarding the host community agreement, as well as associated development agreement. So both of those agreements did require a 3% fee from the licensee to the host community. So as noted in the memorandum, Collective began retail operations in the town of Borrica in March of 2022, following the passage of Chapter 180 of the Acts of 2022. And before payment of Collective's first community impact fees were due, the licensee attempted to begin renegotiating the HCA due to the new law. Collective is alleging that the town refused to renegotiate the HCA or provide an accounting of the town's expenses regarding any community impact from the licensee's operations. Under the HCA, Collective can't renegotiate the community impact fees under the current HCA or the HCA that's in existence. Right now, the licensee can't renegotiate the community impact fees until at least March 2027, after making five annual payments. So to date, Collective has not paid any community impact fees under the host community agreement or any of the other fees that were identified in the development agreement. I will note there is ongoing litigation. So in addition to the town not taking action on Collective's local renewal application, the town has also filed a breach of contract claim against Collective that was filed on December 19 of 2024. They are requesting damages in the amount of $1 million in Middlesex Superior Court for non-payment. As an update to the information that's contained on the fourth page of, and I apologize, there's, we have the first page is numbered, but the remaining pages, the number seems to have dropped off. So it is on the fourth page of the memorandum. There was a pending motion to dismiss at the time of this memo, which was a, a hearing was held on that motion on May 28, 2025. At the time, this was advanced, that matter was still under advisement with the judge. We did confirm this morning that count two from the town, the plaintiff in this instance, was dismissed by the court. However, all of the other claims still do remain and are active matters. So to support its request for equitable relief, Collective has claimed they will suffer irreparable harm by means of losing customer relationships and inevitably have to shut down because of the town taking no action on renewing their 2025 application. The town is also noting that due to the ongoing litigation, Collective has been granted a preliminary injunction by the Superior Court, which quote prohibits the town from taking adverse action against Collective based on any lack of marijuana license issued by the town's select board. So there is a number of equitable relief options that Collective is seeking here. So I will read those out just for clarity. First, an order for the town and the select board, an order from the commission for the town and select board to renew Collective's Town of Borrica marijuana license for 2025. Two, an order.
Can I ask, so under that, under the current statute, can we order the town to do that?
As it would relate to the board's authority here, I defer to general counsel on that one.
Please.
Thank you, Chair. Madam Chair. The answer is no.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Sorry.
Yeah, Madam Chair. So just going through the rest of the requests that they are seeking, then I'll get into kind of the options or the actions that are before the Board for Consideration per this memo. So number two, an order for the town and select board to refrain from closing down, fining or otherwise interfering with the operation of Collective's retail marijuana establishment in the town of Borrica. Number three, a declaration from the commission that A, the commission has primary and exclusive jurisdiction to determine the legality and enforceability of the HCA and development agreement. B, the HCA and development agreement are illegal and unenforceable. C, the town is required to provide or prove, excuse me, that any fees to be collected under the HCA are quote reasonably related to actual costs incurred due to the operation of licensed cannabis businesses. D, the town provide information, data and records regarding any costs to the town anticipated or actual cost resulting from Collective's operation of its retail marijuana establishment within the town. Number four, that the commission immediately open up Collective's renewal portals so it may start the renewal process and submit the disputed HCA. And five, other equitable relief as determined by the commission. So upon review, the commission staff are offering the following options for equitable relief. And given these options, we have certain recommendations in terms of how the commission may want to effectuate it. So we are really looking to the, the options that are articulated in the regulations. So first, the commission may consider approving an extension of the license expiration date without incurring additional prorated fees. And if the commission elects to grant this equitable relief, we would recommend imposing a reasonable expiration date for the licenses similar to the previous matter. Number two, the commission may consider waiving the change of location fees pursuant to 935 CMR 50183C6C Romanant II. Again, if the commission elects to grant this relief, commission staff recommend imposing a condition requiring the licensee to confirm it intends to move from the town of Borrica and submit the required change of location application fee within, or application, excuse me, within a reasonable amount of time as determined by the board. And then three, as always, there, the commission may consider other equitable relief at its discretion. And we do simply note at the end here that pursuant to commission regulations, the commission did add in language to quote deem a provision of an HCA invalid and therefore unenforceable based on the finding that the provision violates the statute and regulations. The commission may also declare an HCA provision of an HCA voidable upon deeming the HCA as a contract of adhesion. So really, that is simply just pointing out or highlighting language in the regulations. But again, I'll be a brokered record for a moment here. But as to the board's authority here and what options they may want to take, I would defer to the general counsel for that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you enforcement counsel. My question is to the general counsel, did we consider filing a motion to intervene? And if the answer is yes or no, could you explain process?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will say that that matter is not strictly on today's agenda. I will say that there are discussions that are ongoing on that.
Can you answer the question?
The answer is we have not filed a motion to intervene.
Okay. And then my other question is, when was the preliminary injunction issued, ECG? In March of 2020? No, they began operating.
Madam Chair.
Please, thank you.
Commissioner Roy, I actually request just a moment to double check that.
Yeah, because I was. Can we just, even though it's not on the agenda, in terms of motion to intervene, can you, can the general counsel just sort of talk to us generally about how and when the process is in terms of allowing motions to intervene in basically any case? Well, what is the process and how do we do it?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I, I will recognize that this matter is not, has been not, has not been noticed for today. So there are certain open meeting law considerations to be aware of so that the question here pertains to.
We can't ask a process question?
The, well, the fact of the matter is that the, this hasn't been noticed as an agenda item on the meeting for today. So for us to deviate from what's been noticed would be an open law issue. So that, that's what I'm trying to highlight.
We'll put it on the next meeting. The good news is we actually are about to have an open meeting law expert judging commissions.
And I'm aware of that. Yeah.
Very helpful. But I would also like that to understand because it, again, because we have so few opportunities under open meeting law to have conversations. And it seems like this is actually one of the things that it sounds like they might even be asking us to entertain. I'm looking here.
Actually, Madam Chair, I think it is Jermaine, because in previous meetings I have said under equitable relief that I would like this board to consider putting it in regulation, filing, appealing to the commission to file a motion to intervene. So.
I think we're in scope.
I think we're in scope because I have mentioned it previously and it does, we're talking about equitable relief. And I think the board should contemplate adding under the options of equitable relief, appealing to the commission to file a motion to intervene.
So does that allow us to get back? Because this has been raised and it has been discussed in, in relation to equitable relief, what that process is. Can you answer that question?
Madam Chair, I'd love to get into it, but I don't want to open ourselves up to, to an open meeting law violation. So I would suggest that it's better practice to notice this for a future meeting and we can have discussion.
So what I would also like, I would also like from the general counsel is that it, we are not deliberating anything here. We're asking an informational question about process. And so you're saying that we are precluded under open meeting law when we're trying to get information that we share with everyone that has a relationship to equitable relief, that you can't answer that question?
If I may, Madam Chair, the, the fact that you are here as a quorum constitutes a deliberation. So even though you're saying that you are not deliberating, technically, from a legal perspective under open meeting law, this is considered a deliberation.
Can you just restate what you had stated in the meeting before that I think places this in scope?
I'd stated in a previous meeting that I think the board should contemplate adding under the provisions of equitable relief, the option to appeal to the commission to filing motion to intervene.
Are you aware that that was raised at a previous meeting in relation to this exact topic?
I do not recall that particular conversation, but the way the, the meeting notice is drafted, Madam Chair, does not, does not suggest that that is part of the conversation here noticed for today.
So when I ask broad questions about policy around equitable relief, I can't ask those questions either? I mean, I've gone kind of far afield and I now, now I'm kind of worried. I've kind of gone far afield talking about the Deerfield situation and, and raising questions and asking about procedure. So have I done anything in any way to move outside the scope when I'm asking broader questions that don't relate to Deerfield specifically?
I, I think in the context of the prior discussion regarding Deerfield, that was relevant to your consideration of that petition. So when you talked.
If I, if I can say, number five, other equitable relief as determined by the commission. Would this not fall under other equitable relief as determined by the commission? Could that?
Actually, yeah, we could direct the general counsel to file a motion.
I mean, could we do that today or is that outside the scope?
I would again.
Under other equitable relief, could we do that?
Well, the other equitable relief language that you are pointing to is in our regulation and is not on the meeting notice for today. So I think we're talking about two different things here, Madam Chair.
It's, it's actions for consideration. If you could look on page five.
I am looking at that right now.
If you look at other equitable relief.
If you look at the meeting notice.
No, 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 no. I'm looking at what other equitable relief, the language that says other equitable relief.
Yes, I see that.
Could we do that? Could we direct you to file?
Yes.
An intervention in this case? Could you, could we ask you that today or is that outside the scope, even though it's other equitable relief?
If I may, Madam Chair, filing a motion to intervene would not be considered equitable relief. That is a, that is outside of the scope of equitable relief. That, that would be a court action.
I think we might find it, all right. So, so what I would, what I would ask the general counsel to do is to work with staff to get an answer to that question. Because when I see other equitable relief, it's fairly open-ended, isn't it?
I, I don't think, I, I think we're talking past each other, Madam Chair, and I think we're talking about two different things. Filing a court action is outside the scope of equitable relief. That is a completely different animal, if you will. It's a, it's a different, it, it exists in a separate category. Equitable relief is a very specific, specific and limited type of relief that is contemplated under our regulations. So there are two different things that we're talking about and I'm just trying to make that, not trying to be difficult.
What, no, no, no. Then what I would like is, I, I guess it's probably in reference to open meeting, that when we're asking a general question about process, that we cannot ask those kinds of questions if, if they, if we have not specifically stated that we're going to have a discussion for no votes. We, we can't, we have to, I can't just ask you, how does this function in, in an open meeting?
If I may, Madam Chair, what has been noticed for today of the equitable relief.
Now we are talking past each other. What I'm saying is, under open meeting law, this sparked a question and you just answered one question that you're saying that intervening in a, in a, in a, in any lawsuit is not equitable relief. You, you've answered that question. But, but you've also stated that just providing us with information about a process that is pertinent to what the commission does in concert with, on behalf of licensees or other entities, that you can't answer that question without that being noticed?
If I may.
Again, it's a process question.
Yeah, and I'm, I think I'm struggling to understand it. I, I, what I'm saying here is that in the context of this conversation, we are limited to what is noticed for the public media.
But, but I'm, I'm, I'm asking a process question beyond the context of this particular. But I'm asking a process question beyond the context of this particular license's issue. And you can't do that in an open meeting without that. We can't discuss or ask you process questions if they haven't been noticed?
I think it's a little bit of an open-ended question, Chair. It's hard to answer that in such an open-ended manner. If there were particulars that you wanted to discuss, I could, I could opine on that.
I raised an issue of, anyway, what I'd love is a memo by midweek next week about when a commissioner is asking a general process question about how our legal team functions. Must that be noticed? Every question about, I'm asking about process. And any conversation, we're not planning on voting, we're not planning, we're asking for information. So if I could get a memo by next Wednesday, I would appreciate that, to just understand a little bit more about why asking a process question about how the commission functions is precluded by open meeting law because it hasn't been put on the agenda. I mean, again, we'll put it on the agenda if that's what the issue is, but I'm literally asking how your team functions, and I'm being told it's outside of open meeting law, because I haven't announced that having this conversation, it sparked a process question for me. So if you could, if your team could get a memo by next Wednesday, I'd appreciate that.
We will certainly do our best, Madam Chair, and I may follow up with you just to get some more specifics on this, because I'm not sure I'm quite clear on the request.
All right, thanks. Okay, so Commissioner Roy.
EC Gooden, did you have time for that?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Roy, I was raising my hand to respond to that.
Thank you.
We're able to look back and refer to the court docket here. So the preliminary injunction was granted by the court on January 6, 2025.
Okay, Madam- Did the court issue a writ of mandamus?
Madam Chair, sorry, can you repeat?
Did the court issue a writ of mandamus? They were seeking that, the plaintiff or the counter plaintiff?
No, I do not believe so at this time.
Okay, and may I, Madam Chair?
Please, thank you.
Did the licensee apply for, this is probably to licensing, I don't know if you, administrative extension, as many others in that previous slide have filed for administrative extensions. That's why we created them and granted them. For instances just like this, have they filed?
Madam Chair.
Please, thank you. Just reading.
Yes, Commissioner, it's my understanding that they did apply for an extension on this one. I will also double check with our licensing team just on the specific dates for those extensions.
Okay, if I may, please, thank you. So I guess where I'm confused is clearly, the HCA, in my purview, having been on the HCA working group and reviewed many of them, it reads as it's outside of the prescribed statute and regulations about some of the provisions in this HCA. And so they are asking for a special accommodation consideration to get the extension without the fee. And they also are requesting waiving the change of ownership, which I can see. Or these are just, are they requesting, are these your recommendation, are these the enforcement council recommendation?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Please, thank you.
So yes, Commissioner Roy, these are really just identifying, they're not specifically a recommendation. I'll just want to clarify what our recommendation ends up being. So this is, these are two of the options that are articulated in our regulations. We're highlighting those as relevant or potentially something that we would want to consider based on the actual request here and the circumstances. Our recommendation is really, given the options that are available are articulated in the regulations, our recommendation is more so on how that might be most or effectively implemented based on our current processes. So for example, this is an option that the commission may consider approving the extension of the license expiration date without occurring additional prorated fees. That is specifically identified in the regulations as one of the options available. We would more so suggest here, and we would recommend that you would impose a reasonable expiration date for the licenses. So that's given more so the licensing process. So I just want to kind of step back for a moment. This is, it's, we're not recommending that you take this action. We've presented that option that is available, but if you were to take that option, given our existing processes, we would recommend imposing that expiration date for the license.
Mr. Roy, has the licensee expressed a financial hardship, why they could not pay the prorated fees?
Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you.
To my understanding, that's not before us right now.
Okay.
Have they, Madam?
Have they exhausted all their administrative extensions?
Madam Chair.
Please, thank you.
I will verify that with licensing as well. I do have an answer on the extension, the first extension question as well. So Community Care Collective, they have, the last renewal payment was made on March 6, 2025. That was for the full license fee. Their current expiration date, as articulated in here, is April 30, 2026, 4/30/26. They're currently operating on an HCA-related extension. They've received two extensions at this point. The first one was for 90 days, and the second one was for 240 days. So given those calculations, there would still be additional extensions that they could seek.
She's going on the map?
Yeah, so my calculation is they still have 635 635 days they could apply for extension. That is not exhausted yet.
Madam Chair, I will trust your math on that, Commissioner Roy.
Not on the fly, I'm going to put caveat on it.
Yes, but they've only used 330 days thus far.
Mr. Stevens, you have a question?
Yes. Appreciate doing the math because are you right?
He's confirmed it.
Is it confirmed? Okay. CFA confirms that they I mean, you know, yes, we could keep, they still have a process that they have not exhausted. I think is what we originally envisioned with making another extension. We need to do that. You know, so for me, when thinking about this, is like, we know this isn't a case of, we need more time to negotiate a new HCA. This is clearly, from what I'm seeing, kind of past that point, if they're already going the judicial route. So I would, when we think about precedents, it's like, this isn't just getting extensions, hoping at some point you're going to be able to negotiate a new HCA. There's clear evidence that that in all likelihood is not going to happen without some type of court intervention. So I'm thinking they can still go through the rest of the process. I think we might want to consider, do we waive their fees through the end of that process? And then obviously, the other piece is-
I could just, I think because we do have evidence that this original HCA is not consistent with the statute.
That's a polite way of putting it.
Right. So and this is also where I come to, I don't like to use the word culpable, it's kind of who brings a little bit of I don't know what the word is, I can't think of the right word, but that they might-
Own us?
Own, yes, they own us. So this is also how we, I think we have to be thinking about this, is that we can see that their HCA is not necessarily, allegedly compliant with the statute.
The new statute.
The new statute. Madam Chair.
Well, even the old.
Statute, statutes still. So there is that part of the way.
There's that tension there, but if I may.
Please.
There's a big universe that could be, again, precedent setting.
No, okay.
And so there are a lot of folks in this situation that maybe haven't made their way to a court of competent jurisdiction yet, but it's headed that way.
Yeah, and so we, again, I have not had the benefit of the back and forth, you know, since
Yeah.
180.
Yeah.
As best, so I appreciate.
So they have not declared a financial hardship. It's in the courts. The court issued a preliminary injunction, and EC Gooden, could you explain what the court said in their preliminary injunction?
Madam Chair.
Please, thank you. I'm sorry, I'm just reading.
Of course. And if I could as well to, Commissioner Roy, I will answer your question on this one too. I'm just pulling up the docket information so that I can read directly from there.
Thank you.
Also, just want to make sure that I'm clear too, in terms of kind of what is before the board here, these are the options for consideration, not particular recommendations that we're saying, you should do this, you should do that. So I just want to make sure that we're I'm clearly articulating that in this context as well. So Commissioner Roy, in, to answer your question, the court ordered, I could actually read the full docket entry too, if that would be helpful. So this was actually added to the docket on January 8, 2025. However, the order is dated January 6, 2025. So quoting from the docket, "Having reviewed the papers supporting the motion by counterclaim plaintiff and third-party plaintiff Community Care Collective, Inc., for mandamus and preliminary injunction requesting that the court compel counterclaim defendant Town of Bullrica and third-party defendant Select Board for the Town of Bullrica, including its individual members, collectively the town or Bullrica, to grant Collective's October 7, 2024, application to renew its 2025 Town Marijuana License, parentheses, the license, effective January 1, 2025, into enjoining Bullrica from taking any adverse action against Collective that would interfere with Collective's ability to continue doing business in the town during the pendency of this action, and having considered the papers filed by Bullrica in opposition and having-
They're still in business, right?
They are still in business.
And Bullrica is enjoined right now.
Correct. So considering the arguments made at hearing on this matter, the court hereby finds, it is ordered that during the pendency of this action and until further notice of the court, the town, and its officers, agents, employees, representatives, and all persons acting in concert or participation with it shall be and are hereby enjoined from engaging in or performing directly or indirectly any and all of the following acts. A, taking any action against Collective on the grounds that its license was not renewed, including cease or desist letter or order of closure, and B, taking any action against Collective on the grounds that its license was not renewed that would interfere with Collective's ability to continue doing business in the town during the pendency of this action. It is so ordered, dated 1/6/25."
Okay, may I? Please, that portends well for Collective, Community Collective. And so they still have many days that they can apply for an administrative extension. They have not declared a financial hardship. And we do need courts to opine on this, truly. We do. Unfortunately, that's the reality of it. Can, I mean, can we direct, can we direct the GC to file a motion to intervene?
Well, no, because we can't, we can't answer it, talk about it.
Okay. Fisher Stevens?
If I might, just to take us a step back, and I want to hear a little bit more, I think, from EC on what Collective asked for us in terms of equitable relief. Fully expecting some of these are things that we cannot do. What struck my curiosity, though, was they are asking specifically around the HCA. I don't think this has been through the process because of not having a compliant HCA. Did we ever deem the HCA? None compliant.
Or, excuse me, Chair. Mr. Stevens, there was, yes, there was notice to the town that there was deficiencies that is identified, I believe, in the memorandum as well, but I won't go into specific details because that is an ongoing matter.
Wait, was you going to repeat that?
Yes, Madam Chair. So I can note that there was a notice provided to the town as part of our HCA review. However, I'm hesitant to get into particular details because that is still a pending matter with the commission and the town. I don't believe, in more straightforward terms, I don't believe we-
Accountable?
Correct, yes. So as part of any annual renewal license or any application, our team will review the host community agreement to ensure that it's compliant with regulations and the statute. So in this instance, I know there has been communication between our team and the town, but my understanding is that it's still an open matter, so I don't want to get into particular details about it.
Help me dig into that a little bit more. How is that still an open matter? We've made an opinion, transmitted that to the town lately, I'm assuming, foible requested document that we would have to make of it. So let me just kind of close the gap on the last piece of your-
Please.
So yeah, it's, in footnote five of the memorandum, the fact that the HCA contained deficiencies was noted and communicated to the town on April 4, 2025. So there was a notice that was provided. My understanding is that the notice was not responded to by the town. So for that, for that reason, we would consider it to be an ongoing investigative matter where there's an ongoing deficiency, so that hasn't been-
That I appreciate. So, but looking to again, what Collective has asked us for their version of equitable relief. I fully understand there are just some things we can't do. Does the licensee get a copy of that transmission to the town? And kind of aligning somewhat with their request, could they ask us for that? And we would have to provide that? I know he's looking for kind of a variation of the document, but excuse me, take a long one, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair.
You say it's not me doing it, and you're okay. So, yes, attorney good.
Commissioner Stevens, yes, the licensee is also included on the notice of the town.
And thank you, Chair. It's just kind of aligning something that they might be looking for in their list of equitable relief demands. I think we've kind of given them a version of that, so. Thank you.
I see they have a second location in Littleton. They have a dispensary in Littleton. And I'm assuming that's compliant, or there's no issues with Littleton, it's just that it's germane to just Bullrick.
Attorney Good?
Madam Chair, thank you. Commissioner Roy, that is not a subject of this particular relief request. So unfortunately, I can't directly answer that, but we could look into that if that would be something of interest.
Are they a general applicant?
This licensee, I believe, is a general applicant. Let me double check that, but that, again, was not something that was specifically identified in this request. But we will look in just to confirm anything. I don't want to-
I think you raised a question. I think it's, I think this is sort of more qualitative issue, is that are they able to, you know what I mean, to sustain themselves?
Yes, it is. And I can, I'm having a little difficulty processing waiving the prorated fees. I'm not having difficulty saying, okay, if you need to move to a different municipality, we can waive the change of location. Like, that, I think-
That's almost a no.
That's a no-brainer, but it is a no-brainer. Knowing that they still have 635 days, knowing that it's in the courts, could opine, they already got a favorable preliminary injunction, not saying how the final decision will turn out, and knowing that we could possibly file a motion to intervene. I think there's some variables around one, but I think two. I mean, we can grant partial, I mean, we can, we don't have to accept it all, but that's all. Because if we waive their prorated fees, there's going to be a long line.
It'll be a long line to-
A very long line.
While you went through to make sure we got prorated. You don't want to waste all that-
Working with finance and shoring up our internal controls, right? So that makes me nervous.
You raised it first in 2020.
I did, I did, I did. Thank you.
All right, so now where are we? Folks? Mr. Stevens?
Thank you, Chair. I'm okay with, I don't know how this comes out in a forum, right? It's kind of maybe future equitable relief, but right now, we're saying exhaust your available extension days left- available extension days left to you. Still pay the prorated fees, if I'm hearing that correctly. How do we indicate we would?
If I can interrupt, or I think one of the points that you raised is economic hardship that I don't think that, and, and I don't know if this is a question we should be asking. I don't know if you, and I'm, I'm sorry you interrupted. Think that that is also something that has a general, because we're, I think, you know, we're, we're in new territory here. We're trying to sort of, do you think that, that, that financial hardship, you know what I mean, that that is something that maybe a licensee might have to explain, you know, we, we could see they're spending, obviously, you know, there's a lot of money at stake. They're spending money on legal fees. And lawyers.
They're still paying properties.
Still paying, yeah, but they're also still in business and hopefully creating revenue. But it's, I do think that there could be a financial hardship issue that we might, there's, there's equity is not a good word because it's, but it, but it's equity. It's like why, you know, fairness ultimately, or what is a fair result? But also the, the, would you be more comfortable with something like that if you knew that there was a financial?
I'd be interested in hearing that from, uh, we're going to get claims of financial hardship. I meant, here's my bank statement. I'm in the red versus financial hardship. I'm not making as much as I was four years ago. It's, it's an interesting question to ask. I think it could be helpful. But I, I think where I'm coming down is exhaust what you and everybody else has available. You might be in a different boat. You might be in court as opposed to not in court. Let's exhaust those days and then how do we signal? If we take up the second piece, how do we signal that if you do choose to move? That we would entertain that. I guess that's.
Yeah, we could accept that.
Accept that today, right?
Yeah. I mean, I, I, I want to do that, or I, I think I'm aligned in doing that. I'm just wondering, how do we convey that in a way that's? You know, yes, we're indicating to you today.
I think we can grant a partial response, but also just depending on additional circumstances playing out. But I think that that, I mean, we might have consensus that.
And, and let's remember that Bill Rick is joined.
Right, from doing anything.
Doing anything. Can't shut them down. They gotta keep operating.
Yes. So I think that that one key, that one key issue that I, I think that, that they are not hurting them in a way that is immediately stopping them from engaging in business. Whereas the other one, there could have been, but, but as you read that letter.
Because they have six hundred and thirty five days left to exhaust. It would almost be a special accommodation. And I think the line would be very long.
Right. So I, I think, oh, Commissioner Stevens.
Sure. Quick question. So obviously, I think we, like, your help with fashioning a motion to say what we, I think we're coming into consensus to say exhaust your number of days still available to you. And that.
I think we need to put that in a motion. I think, do you think we need to put that in a motion? That, that they have to exhaust?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we do. I think we just need to say what we're granting.
I, I want to be a little careful. Because we're not, they have that option to, to do that, right? I think what we're stating here is if in the event that something happens, you know, we, we, we get bad information and something, but I think that we're recognizing that we haven't heard anything about financial hardship. They're not, they're, they're being protected by the courts right now from the community, preventing their ability to do business. So we don't have.
And they still have extensions.
And they still have that. But I, the only reason I, I just, again, because we're setting precedent here, I want us to be very clear that we are consistent on this. So not that that's a bad idea, because normally I like to be inclusive, but I think here it might set another standard for us. Cause there may be someone that has not completely exhausted their, um, rights. You know, within that, you know, six hundred additional days that we might say, oh, fairness requires us to, to do. So I think you're, I, I usually like to be inclusive and button everything up, but I, I just get a little worried that we don't need to do that and all we need to do is the second option here. The commission may consider waiving the change of location fee if, if indeed they go, and, and then they don't have to come back to us. And if something happens in the court, they lose, they already at least know that that is one thing that they.
That's one thing is available to them. And if I can.
Please, thank you.
Another quick question. We indicate to them today, however, the one thing we are willing to afford them to do if they decide at any point in this process, whether it's before their days run out or before the court does whatever, they decide to up and move, we can tell them that yes, we would waive your fees if you decided to move to another community and open up. It doesn't stop them from reapplying to us for equitable relief based on anything else that happens going forward.
Executive Director.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I would just also note, is that going to be time bound? Are you looking for them to look for a potential change of location with, within calendar year twenty six? Otherwise, they'd have to come back to you for requests, just thinking about the time.
Would it be through, I mean, their, their license expires on, I forget, uh, next year. But I mean, is it through? Not that far away.
I'm just offering time bound might make sense in the moment. Just that if you're, if you're offering that you are, you're offering them a potential change of location fee waiver, that you may want to just put some time bound on that. It's not in perpetuity.
As long as we also could extend it if we, if we file that necessary.
I thi- I think we're, see, see, then it requires us to take, I, I think.
Yeah.
I think they're either going to move or not. And
They might need two years to move. I don't want to timestamp it, like, time bound it, like.
No, no, no more than three years. How about that? That this ability to access this benefit, no more than three years from today. Are you okay with that? Because it's pretty open and then they don't have to come back to us.
That's pretty open. I, I just would want to give them the flexibility that this is still dragging itself out. I hope it wouldn't. That we wouldn't necessarily have to read your limits, but if we can revisit it.
Yeah, but why, but why don't we just, why don't we just say, you know, this, 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 this fee waiver for the, the change of location, uh, is, is valid for no more than three years from today.
Okay.
Does, does that work for you?
Is that a date we want to set or is there another date that we should think about?
General counsel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This, my point actually wasn't related to the, the time limit here. I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Seven's question earlier about if there's anything prohibiting the licensee submitting another equitable leave petition, and the answer is no. So they can submit another petition in the future. Sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. No, I thought it was certainly answered. Sorry. Okay, that is three years. I mean, that's a pretty long timeframe. Can we find some certainty for us? And, uh, I don't, I think that this is something that it sounds like they're probably going to keep fighting to stay there, so it probably may.
We were thinking November twenty twenty eight.
Yeah.
So, um, recommend a second motion where we, uh, direct the general counsel to, uh, explore a motion to intervene on this case.
I, I, yeah, on this case, but I think we want to understand the general process. Right? Okay, all right, um, all right, executive director, and then we'll sort of be.
Sure. I would just add that, um, to the earlier point, I understand there's a disagreement on kind of the, the way to do it. But I do think that within the motion, we can say that you're looking to put the intervention on the next available chair and therefore it's, it's included within the motion as, that's part of what you're looking to come back to.
Are you making a motion? Well, you can make a motion. You can fashion the mo-, I mean, I, I think we'd like to. We're going to get a memo to find out whether or not open meeting law precludes us for, from asking procedural questions if they haven't been.
If they're tangentially related.
Right. So I think we've already asked that. Do we need a motion? Are you talking about a motion?
Talk about a motion to explore, uh, have the, uh, directing general counsel to, um, explore the, um, the emotion, pursuing a motion to intervene in this case and provide an update to the board at the next meeting.
Okay, you just made that motion.
Yes.
You wanted to do this in two separate?
Yes, we don't want multivariate motions.
So, so we want to have a motion around the.
Okay, we make the motion on the easiest thing. So I would entertain a motion that allows the, uh, commission to approve waiving collective's change of location fee pursuant to nine thirty five C M R five hundred, uh, dot one eighty, subject and three, C six, C remnant two. If the commission elects to, uh, 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 and I, and I'm done, right? That's all. May consider waiving the fee, oh, uh, uh, in, in regards to a change of location application which should be exercised no longer than three years from today.
Are you going to start all over?
I know, I'm going to have to start a little. Please.
Madam Chair, and this is obviously very high level and hasn't been run through, uh, legal. So I just said move to approve a waiver of change of location fee. I put this in the chat, so I'm just reading it. Uh, so everybody, uh, move to approve a waiver of change of location fee to Community Care Collective for their Bill Rickel location within three years of today.
Thank you. That's my better plan, try to do. There's your second. So moved in second. I'll take a call of the roll. Chair says aye. Commissioner Stevens.
Aye.
Commissioner Roy.
Aye.
It's passed unanimously. Uh, uh, general counsel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to recommend that you include the license number in your motion language. Just to be.
Bill Rickel location.
Okay, uh, 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 move to reconsider.
Do I read it with the license?
Uh, uh, I'm forgetting my reference. Move to reconsider. Between the motion. Second? Okay, we will reconsider that motion, uh, and, uh, uh, with, with new language. I'm not doing this.
Okay, um, the motion language is move to approve a waiver of change of location fee to Community Care Collective. License number M R two eight, two nine, seven, for their Bill Rickel location within three years of today. Or we don't even need for their Bill Rickel location, within three years of today.
Okay, so, um.
I think the number is two, seven. Two, eight, two, nine, seven, four.
M R two, eight, two, nine, seven, four. Can I transpose?
No, I think you dropped the four.
So we reconsidered the motion. It's been reconsidered. You've now offered.
A friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment. Okay, so we will now take a call of the roll. We will now take a call of the roll, uh, to endorse, uh, the language as amended. Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
Commissioner Stevens? Chair votes aye. Okay, I, I'm, I'm hoping that I, procedural to that.
Okay, and do I share the second?
Yes.
Um, the motion reads, uh, uh, move to direct the general counsel to explore filing a motion to intervene in the Community Care Collective, Inc., be Bill Ricka lawsuit and report back to the board at the next public meeting.
Yes. So that is your motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, uh, second, I moved in second. Take the call of the roll. Chair votes aye. Commissioner Stevens?
Aye.
Commissioner Roy?
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Okay. Thank you. There's a lot of work in it. We, we didn't travel. We, we spent a lot of time, but we, we, we might not have gotten to Oz yet, but I think that we had a good conversation.
We did.
And I appreciate, and, and I also want to thank the, uh, folks on the, on the, on all the teams. Also thank Attorney Podzinski who gave us another tutorial. So I just, I appreciate it. And again, as I, as I apologize, and I'm told I'm not supposed to apologize as much, but, uh, you know, I'm still catching up, getting up to speed. And, and it's one of those things that is very, very complex to get our arms wrapped around. So.
And, and thank you all for answering my question.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And all the financial impacts.
Right, to rest right now. So we, all right, so we are now at, um, uh, nine. Commission discussion invokes the letter of support for the Massachusetts Committee on Gaming and Health grant application to the Department of Mental Health for a behavioral health promotion and prevention, prevention grant. Uh, the executive director, I think you're presenting that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I did have a call with Commissioner Stevens and the folks at, um, M A C G H, which is gaming and health.
You can't say anything about an acronym.
I know. I, I tried to, I, I'm going to kind of go through a, a summary here and I'm going to try to make sure, because there's a lot. So, um, the Mass Council on Gaming and Health is applying for the tier A category of funding within the O B H P P, which stands for the Office of Behavioral Health Promotion and Prevention, which is within the Department of Mental Health. Um, and they're, they're applying for the tier A category of that, of a grant program for promotion and prevention, um, grant. Uh, the grant supports organizations to build new initiatives by assessing community needs and piloting small projects. The tier A section of the grant program is for the design and development support for emerging programs. M A C G H is approaching this project with the hope to help address a critical knowledge gap from a public health perspective. M A C G H will analyze the state and population level data, including from social and economic impacts of gaming in Massachusetts, which is acronym Sigma. Uh, D P H's community health data and recent reports from the Cannabis Control Commission on cannabis. Um, and the other reports related as well to gaming trends, gambling trends in communities of Everett, Boston, related to the, um, Boston Encore, um, facility and in Springfield, which is the M G H facility. Um, I had discussed, discussed with staff at M A C G H, uh, that due to the quick turnaround time of when this grant is due, that the recommendation I would make would be for the C C C to provide a letter of support for the grant application. That said, uh, as they proceed, I do believe that Dr. Johnson, the research team, and Dr. Sarkis and the data analytics team, uh, would be excellent resources to M A C G H if this application is successful. And that the outcome of this proposed project will be important information for us to use in the future. I know as well.
And maybe you're getting there, but can you just sort of say, in fifth grade language, what do we hope to get? I mean, obviously we're, you know, these are different, you know, potentially addictive behaviors and, you know, and so just what does that do for us as a commission? How will we use that information?
So I think one of the things that we highlight in the draft letter, which I can read as well, um, for you to consider would be that we have, um, we have focused a lot of our public information efforts around um, equity in the cannabis industry, uh, prohibited use of products for individuals under twenty one and best practices for storing products in the home to avoid toxicity with children and, and pets. But from a mental health standpoint, that is the scope that this group is looking to undertake. That would certainly be excellent resources for us in our future public, uh, awareness campaigns that they may be able to put a lot of information together that benefits us and our future public awareness campaigns in the future. So I think that's where we're looking at this as an opportunity. Um, I had sort of discussed with them the potential that we would do this as joint, but just based on the turnaround time, it makes more sense for us to support if, if the board is in favor, um, with a letter of support and then follow up if they're successful with our teams working with theirs, uh, if they find that to be amenable.
Thank you.
Um, and so I would just note as well, uh, that one of the representatives from M A C G H, uh, Marlene Warner, um, also is considered one of the, the folks that we may be putting on our, um, social consumption, public awareness working group, which is being finalized coinci-, uh, to coincide with the final regulations. Um, so a draft letter of support is in front of you. Uh, it would be obviously written from the chair. Um, but, uh, you know, kind of summarizes exactly why we think this is a good thing and how we would be willing to, to help if, if necessary or, or needed or, or an opportunity. Um, I can read that letter if you'd like, but obviously that's in front of you and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Um, I'm, I'm not sure if we need to, to read the letter unless, uh, my fellow commissioners, um, Commissioner Roy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Executive Director, so did they solicit to us this, and they need it as part of the grant application? They need letters of support? Please, thank you.
Thank you. So, um, they are prepared to apply for this grant. Um, where they are looking at, uh, issues overlapping of cannabis and gaming, they did reach out to us to let us know. Um, and I had just reviewed to sort of say, I will put them in touch, obviously, with our C F A O, who we have before, our research team, our data team. But given the turnaround time, it makes more sense for us to say, do we support their application? So I have the R F P in the backup materials as well. They would be pursuing this grant with, with or without the letter. So I have the R F P in the backup materials as well. They would be pursuing this grant with it, with or without the letter. But we're looking to say that this would certainly be able to benefit us as well.
Do we have the R F P?
I have that here. It should be in the packet. I know you have a lot. Yes, that's it. Exactly.
And if I could say, I think that this is also one of the issues that, you know, we find ourselves with. Because Dr. Johnson and her team certainly can be applying for and winning a number of different grants related to public health around cannabis. But we, because we don't necessarily have the ability to take that money in, working with some of these partners helps us get some of that important research done. We get to be involved in that, but we don't have to worry. But this is also an opportunity to say that one of the things that I think would be helpful is to continue. And I believe that that's one of the executive director's goal is to looking at potentially establishing a more quasi-independent cannabis research center. And as I probably told people here before, when I ran unsuccessfully for governor in two thousand and two, one of the things that I had raised as one of my center, central issues of focus is looking at healthcare disparities, racial healthcare disparities. And eighteen years, not twenty years after the campaign, they actually set up a quasi-government agency looking at healthcare, racial, racial healthcare disparities. So there is a model, there is a way to do it. So I'm hoping that we can continue to pursue that. Commissioner Stevens first?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think the E D did a better job of walking us through what this application is probably better than I could. Just for some background, why I hope we can support this letter and add it to their packet. It's covering a couple of our D I communities. It's a good partnership for us, I think. As you pointed out, it creates opportunity for this team to work with our research department. I also think, I don't, sorry if I missed you saying it, but I think it also provides some opportunities for us to engage. Couple of committees on the cab, including the research committee with Commissioner Roy, as well as, I think, the Public Health Committee. And it's my understanding that the Mass Council has done work previously with our research department. They did a contract to go out and help identify experts in the field. Because I think research department had a good approach, which was, we don't want to do it and look like we're cherry picking. So we'll let another entity go out and find our resources for us. So they have done work for us before. The only thing, obviously, I don't think we need to include in the letter of support, but I think at some point, and I think it's a grant for up to a year, but at some point when they're done, it'd be great to have them come in and kind of present their findings. Sharing a report or a document with.
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. Commissioner Roy?
Through the chair to Commissioner Stevens. Do you know who is on this, their research? Who will be conducting the research?
Believe they have to, it's paying for a halftime F T E, but a lot of, a lot of what they're doing is going out and talking to people in kind of a qualitative research purpose. It's talking to local officials, it's talking to, it's doing the outreach.
You asked a question, who's conducting it?
If I may, please, no, I'm just saying, I guess I don't think. So the reason I'm asking, a couple of reasons, is will this be peer reviewed, published? Like, where does this end up? And I just have a friendly amendment to the letter. Based on, on the first page where it says the C C C can assist M A C G H in a variety of ways at the discretion of M A C G H and D M H, for example, the associated need for the foreign advisory panel. I'd like to change made a shall. I know we can't necessarily direct them, but we're putting our name on this. And this is scientific research that, you know, we have a Ph D John Hopkins trained that I think could lend her expertise to the mission of this. So.
You want to change a shall for may?
Made a shall. Like, in other words, we really want.
Sure.
Research team or data team to be part of this.
I agree with that. I think we have consensus, but I also am looking because we still have, there's a little, I didn't have you read the letter, but I pulled it up and it, we have a, I have yellow, which we're still trying to work on language, it looks like. So maybe you could share that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just in the exact same paragraph that Commissioner Roy had mentioned, so made a shall is fine. Just as well, I had put open data team. Technically, the name is the data and analytics team. So just summarize that as well. We can make that. And so one of the things that I had highlighted in yellow for the discussion, which I had highlighted to this M A C G H team as well, is that obviously our purview and jurisdiction is cannabis.
Right.
And, you know, marijuana derived, so to speak. And so there is a lot of discussion, which I know Commissioner Roy and the chair have highlighted from recent speaking engagements on hemp. Now, that's not currently our jurisdiction, that's M D R jurisdiction. But just to highlight for this group, as they start out, that they may want to be looking at the term cannabinoids, obviously, which comes from our research team as well, to highlight that there are products, Commissioner Roy and I had a conversation with W C B B, for example, where we highlighted that some of the questions that were coming to us were for products that were not under our regulatory purview. So by using the term cannabinoids, that they may want to be looking at things that are hemp derived as well, just to make sure that they are asking the right question. So that was the intent there.
Commissioner Roy, I move to make a friendly amendment in front of hemp, intoxicating hemp.
And I think we could have a consensus on that. Commissioner Stevens, you could read that.
Yeah.
All right.
Like somewhere else.
Please.
So as the letter is presented in front of you, we would change in the third paragraph to intoxicating hemp. And in the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraphs, change made a shall and the open data team to data and analytics team. And then obviously, we would need some room for formatting from the E A's to put this and have it signed by the chair.
Thank you. Right, I will entertain a motion to approve the language of this letter in support of the grant being put together by the Mass Council on Gaming and Health. So I hear a second.
Second.
Having been moved in second, I will call the roll. Chair Brian votes yes. Commissioner Roy?
Yes.
Commissioner Stevens?
Yes.
We pass that unanimously. So now we are going to. So we have a very interesting announcement to make today. Very pleased yesterday. An exciting announcement yesterday when we had several of the folks testifying about the disproportionately impacted areas. They raised the question as to whether or not we should wait to take a vote on that, accepting that particular study, pending the appointment of the Social Justice Commissioner. And today, the treasurer, attorney general and governor, I believe it was, all three agreed to this position. But Attorney Carrie Benedon, who works currently in the Attorney General's office, who is apparently an expert on open meeting law, which is great. We will be relying on her not only for her background and experience, understanding social justice issues, but also helping us to continue to improve openness, responsiveness and transparency. So with that, I think that it's appropriate to determine when she's going to be sworn in, whether or not she might be a part of the final vote on the social consumption regulations. I know that we had initially anticipated completing that before Christmas. I think that there's still a possibility that we can do that, but I would like to give her the opportunity because she does sit in such an important seat, which is reflective of the needs to improve social equity generally across the Commonwealth. So for today, we will table the discussion and review of the draft regulations. And hopefully, we will be getting some additional information about when she will be, if she hasn't already been sworn in. And hopefully, we can welcome her to our next meeting on November eighteenth. Are there any comments, questions?
I, I think that's, oh, sorry.
It does.
No.
I think that's, I think that's a fair approach.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Roy, are you comfortable with that?
I am, and I just want to welcome her. We're excited to hear this news. Excited to have her join us on the board and bring that lens to these important decisions that we have before us. So this is great news and we're really excited to have her join us.
Thank you. So with that, I don't think there's any new business not anticipated at the time of posting. So the next meeting date will be November eighteenth. And that will be hybrid, that will begin at aspirationally ten o'clock. And we do have our public meeting for December eleventh. But there, I will note just for the public that this, putting this off, this conversation off today may, may require us to have additional meetings. I know that we're looking at everyone's schedule to make sure. And perhaps this could be the full complement of all five commissioners, which would be excellent. So that actually would be optimal, because I know we actually do have a couple of issues that are, where I want, we're at a little bit of a stalemate right now trend. So having additional votes to break any ties would be helpful. So just noting that it's fairly likely that we probably will, and I do think there was, I had asked the question. Hold on one second. I had asked the question about dates and while we're here, obviously, we can have. And so, you know, you know, if indeed we needed to, you know, I would be, and this is not anything set in stone, and our executive assistants, Kate and Abby, will be helping us do this. But, you know, if indeed we needed maybe December third, you know, sometime that first week in December, the week prior to that is obviously Thanksgiving week, which might be tricky. But anyway, we will, we will work to make sure that we, that we get this, that we move as rapidly as we can to get this completed. But also making sure that we're welcoming our new commissioner and hopefully welcoming back one of our existing commissioners. And it would be great to have all five people around. So I'm excited about that. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Commissioner Stevens?
So moved.
Commissioner Roy?
Second.
Having been moved in second, it, I'll follow the roll. Chair Brian votes yes. Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Commissioner Roy?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.